All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua. Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Sargent.
Here.
Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone for joining us. This is a big crowd this evening, and I want to thank you, and the whole board thanks you for being here. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. And as we always, we're going to start our meeting with the superintendent's report.
Board President Marquess, member of the board, members of the board have a couple of comments, and then a statement to read to you this evening. I want to thank the Boulder Valley Rotary for having me there today. It was a great meeting, got a chance to share a little bit about the district and our future plans. Really enjoyed the opportunity to visit with them. Also want to thank Principal Don Stinchrude at Fairview High School for inviting me for Coffee with the Principal last Thursday. Got a chance to meet with lots of parents and share about things that are happening in district and asked lots of questions. And lastly, Board, I'd like to read a statement to you. And we have lots of families here tonight, and I really appreciate that, and I appreciate you being here to hear this. So on January 8th, I recommend to this Board to conditionally approve the Ascent Charter application. At the time, I was optimistic, given Ascent stated desire to be part of our community. They would have, they would, given their stated desire to be part of our community, they would understand our position and accept the conditions we put forth as a measure of good faith for our future partnership. Three weeks later, my perspective has changed. Instead of embracing what we asked for, Ascent has asked for no conditions, a clean approval. The fact that they presented and chose not to present, along with answers to the additional questions that were asked, lead me to change my recommendation from a conditional approval to a denial. That said, we have work to do. I've heard loud and clear from our community there's a number of families that are looking for different options in their education. We need to hear that as a team and dig in to best understand what that can look like here in BVSD. It's my belief we can accomplish this without compromising parent representation and our policies that protect our students, including our nondiscrimination policy, staff ethics conflicts of interest policy, teaching about religion and religion in the school's policy, and equal education opportunities policy. Board, I've committed my entire professional life to supporting all students, and I just cannot recommend anything to you that might compromise that. That's all for my comments.
Thank you. Kathy?
Rob, I just want to say I was sitting in the audience at the Fairview Coffee with the principal, and I thought you handled the questions beautifully. I thought the whole thing, I appreciated you taking the time to come and stay for the most of the meeting, and it was right after we'd made the decision on late start time, so there were concerns around that, and other just concerns about teachers and relationships. And so I just want to say thank you for a job well done and for taking the time to come and talk to that community.
Okay.
I can't.
Yeah, well-
I can't, but I'll ask someone else to. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, Board members, any questions for the superintendent at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our next item. And this evening, we have a DAC report. I'd like to invite, that's our District Accountability Committee, made up of volunteers.
I think it's on. Is that better? Lean in, thanks. Hi, my name's Amanda Brown, and I'm part of the District Accountability Committee, and I'm on the executive board. And I have been the liaison to the Budget Survey Subcommittee. And so we are reporting on district spending priorities from the perspective of the District Accountability Committee. Two subcommittees have worked on this, as well as having the memo being reviewed by the DAC membership. SAC, Student Accountability Committee Budget Survey Subcommittee, reviewed the budget survey, which participation was higher this year, it was 96 percent, all but two schools participated in that. The Data and Assessment Subcommittee also dug into the data that they could find from all the outside resources, including any available academic data, the Unified Improvement Plan, and the Teaching and Learning Conditions in Colorado survey results. Our recommendations are to continue to align with the strategic plan. While many priorities have high variance from school to school, a few have high correlation across the district and school levels. The top two are equity and social-emotional learning. Those have been our top priorities, sometimes flip-flopping between what is the top and what is the second, but pretty evenly matched for at least the last three years. In addition to that, data reporting is a priority so that we can know how we are doing in those regards. With respect to equity and support for all, our digging has shown that the gaps that we see in achievement and growth continue, and we see little improvement over time. So we're asking for increased allocations that provide equitable access to highly skilled teachers and support staff, including full-day kindergarten, differentiated interventions, and high level of evidence-based curricula. With regard to social-emotional learning and support, we recommend implementation of Phase III of the school counselors. So to increase school counselors, improve family supports, which would include things like the community liaisons, family partnerships, and facilitating external resources. Also, integration of evidence-based social-emotional learning programming into the academic curriculum. So we can see some more substantial learning in social-emotional learning. Additionally, the final category that we called out was the data reporting. So lack of data around performance, particularly with special populations like free and reduced lunch and language learners, does not allow for the public to assess how we're doing, and so we would like to see more of that. So continue to inform families regarding assessment and their purpose. Having interim assessments, particularly around math, provide initiative, public reports of state and local data at the school and district level. So, and also administering surveys to gauge and communicate the stakeholders' perceptions, so just to allow for that transparency. Are there any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you for all the work you did in conducting the survey and working with all of our locally, local school accountability committees. Kathy, you had a question?
Can we get what you just said? Do you have a written report or something that you could share with us? I was trying to take notes, but-
So this is all from the memo that was sent out, and it can be sent out again. I think it's in Board docs also, as well as some more digging in of the analysis that both subcommittees put forth. So you'll have, you can get a lot of details if you want them.
And I just echo Tina's, thank you for all the time and effort you put into that.
Other questions, Sam?
Yeah, really appreciate your work on this. Did you say you had higher participation than in years past?
Yes. I think last year, the participation rate was around 90 percent, and this year was 96 percent, all but two schools.
Excellent. That's great to hear, and I don't know how you did it, but that's fantastic.
We did email out again. I don't, I wasn't on it last year on this particular Subcommittee, so I know that there was more, more follow-up to make sure that people got in even after the deadline, but-
Well, it's really important to me, and I know, I think my fellow Board members to know these recommendations from the DAC, and when they bubble up from nearly every school, it increases the weight of those recommendations. So thanks again.
Board members, Richard, thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. I'm very pleased to hear that you're also recommending more parental support activities. So thank you.
Other Board members? Okay, so our next item is public participation. The Board recognizes-
Tina, before you do that-
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I would like to move to amend the order of tonight's agenda to consider the action item on the Ascent Charter application after the completion of public participation tonight. And I think it's a motion that maybe you want to explain. First, I need a second, then we can have an explanation. Okay?
Okay, so we have a second. So what Kathy is asking for is that we give time for all speakers to speak before we go to the agenda item. And just from a term of practicality, I think we have 40 speakers, Laura, is that correct?
We have a total of 41. I believe one person took their name off. So it would be 40 speakers on agenda items.
Okay, so we, so with 40 speakers, it's not that much over an hour, it's two minutes per speaker. So, and the way this would work is that we have a motion and a second, and then we need a two-thirds majority to allow for the all-public participation and to waive our usual one-hour limit. Okay? Did I explain that correctly, Melissa?
That's my motion.
Okay, and then can, any discussion or questions, Board members? Okay, and Laura, do you, can I call the roll now, Melissa? Laura, could you call the roll? And this is in favor of the motion to listen to all speakers tonight prior-
Just for clarification, and then go immediately to the agenda item on Ascent?
No.
Okay.
No.
No, just rather than having them after, the, our usual protocol would be that the people stop after an hour, and so we're not going to do that.
Richard?
So we have, this is an agenda item. And do we have non-agenda items? Speakers, yeah, for public participation?
We have one.
One, okay.
Any other questions, Board members, prior to voting? Do I need to add that to the motion? Can we let the non-agenda person go first, the one non-agenda person? Okay, all right, great. Okay, Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Okay, the motion on the table is to amend the order of the meeting so that we can complete all-public participation at one time, even though we go over one hour. Benford.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so, public participation. "We recognize the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the Board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items except tonight. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go-" Okay, so we just changed the rules. So we are going to listen to all of it now and not have the one-hour limit. Please stop at two minutes so we can hear everyone, and let's, and the issue is, it kind of makes it hard for me if I give one person a little extra and not the other person, because I don't have a timer back here. So when the, when the light turns yellow, get ready to wrap it up. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th-grade students. The Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K through 12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the Board can hear from all of you. We are going to hear from all of you, but if we could do it in the two-minute timeline, that would be great." The other thing I want to talk about, we heard a little bit of feedback about people not liking some of the way commentary was being handled on social media forums around the, some of the topics that we're talking about tonight. I would ask that we don't cheer, applaud, boo, or hiss, any of those things after someone speaks. This is a safe place to speak. Every view is welcome here. We are so happy each of you is here, and we hope that we can be respectful listeners to each other this evening. So, thank you. All right, is that good? Yeah, all right. So, we are going to start with our non-agenda item. And that is, I'm gonna have to go to the last page, I think. Rachel Gellert.
Hi. Thank you all so much for having me. My name is Rachel Gellert, and I'm here representing Boulder County Public Health. I specifically am representing a program that I work for called Oasis. Oasis, if you aren't aware, is a program within BCPH that works specifically with LGBTQ youth in our community. And I'm here just to share some statistics from our Healthy Kids Survey in 2017. The surveyed students from this report are specifically from Boulder Valley School District, and some of the statistics that we got back were pretty startling. Students in BVSD are experiencing, who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or not sure, are experiencing higher rates of bullying, twice as likely to experience electronic bullying. LGBT and not sure students have significantly higher rates of depression, suicidal ideation, self-harm, suicidal plans, and suicidal attempts. Colorado's Department of Public Health has also done similar surveys, showing that LGBTQ and questioning students are experiencing higher rates of bullying, are more likely to engage in substances, and higher rates of suicidal ideation, plans, and depression. So these statistics, we found, were really startling and really heavy, but on the flip side of that, we have some really exciting news to share. Some of these statistics are from Glisten's 2017 National Climate Survey, which shows that there are many protective factors that can have a very powerful impact on these students. So, schools that have inclusive curriculum that affirms all students and all identities, students in these schools are less likely to hear homophobic remarks, less likely to feel unsafe because of their sexual orientation or because of their perceived sexual orientation, and gender expression, higher rates of self-esteem, less likely to miss school, and higher rates of GPAs. So we wanted to share that information with you all, and how important it is to have supportive communities for these students. Thanks so much.
And I'm going to add another thing. If you are passionate about your sentence and you're hitting the end of your time, you can email us. And we really read all of our emails. We're not totally up to speed right now, but we do read our emails. So in all seriousness, so you can send that, anyone can send remarks. If you hit your time and you feel like you need to share something, please do it via email. Thank you. Okay, so our, on agenda items, we have our first speaker, William P.
Hello. My name is William Paulson, and I live in Boulder Valley School District. I'm here to ask that you approve the Ascent Classical Academy. I had the opportunity to go to Golden View Classical Academy down in Golden for the first two years it was opened. Going to school so far away from home was hard because we spent a lot of time in the car. It wasn't our community, and I also did not get to partake in many extracurricular activities. Those were the main reasons we left. Having been homeschooled my whole life, I didn't know exactly what to expect when we began there. However, I found that I really enjoyed the classroom atmosphere. The amount of work was challenging, but it made me a better student. The accountability that I had from there, from teachers, was good for me, as well as the structure I did not have as a homeschooler. I was disappointed when we stopped going to GVCA. The teachers were amazing, and I always left the classes with an inspired zeal for the classes themselves and their subjects. Latin and math were my favorites. I also appreciated the focus on character and core values that the school promoted. And since I know from personal experience that the school was a success, I hope that the Ascent Schools approved so that I can have the same kind of school available to me and my younger brother. I can also say that in response to people opposing this school, and from my own experience in upper school, that there was no religious teaching and won't be discrimination, but instead, there was and will be unbiased, intelligent material taught that inspires the pursuit of knowledge, not the pursuit of prejudice. The Ascent Classical Academy is a school that Boulder Valley District, that should be welcomed eagerly because it is a school that Boulder Valley needs, and will have tremendous ability to fulfill the potential of the next great minds. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Jude C.
Um, hi. My name is Jude, and I am a 12-year-old transgender girl. I am a seventh grader at Boulder, at a Boulder Valley school that I love. Once a year, I testify at the state Capitol, asking the representatives and senators to pass the Birth Certificate Modernization Act. Since I asked them for their votes, I wanted to ask you for yours tonight. I started transitioning when I was nine years old. My mom, dad, and sister wanted me, wanted to give me a safe place to transition, so we moved to the Boulder Valley School District area. We did this so I could attend school in BVSD. I had a wonderful transition. The elementary school I went to and attended was, supported me, and my current school does as well. I feel safe at my school and know that the teachers and staff have my back. My mom told me about a new charter school that wants to come into BVSD. She also shared with me that the school has been known to discriminate against LGBTQ youth and will not welcome or accept us into their school. I am here to ask you to vote no against this application and not allow this school to join the BVSD community. I have a lot of friends in the LGBTQ community as well, and we all feel safe right now. But if you start letting discriminatory people into our district and schools, we will lose that comfort. It is important that LGBTQ students feel safe and know that the district is not going to turn away from them. Thank you for your time, and again, please vote no against this application.
Okay, Rick Smith?
Hello, thank you. My name is Rick Smith. I am a parent of four children, three who have been able to go to Boulder Valley schools. All four of them are different. Their learning styles are different. They're just different individuals. The thing that, you know, that's tough is, from what I've seen, is, is the schools that my kids have attended don't really embrace a lot of variety. They, they seem to, you know, have their, I'll call it tunnel vision for, for lack of a better word. You know, one of my students did, did, did well in the school. My, my youngest son, he didn't do so well, and we didn't really have a lot of options for him within the school district. You know, we looked at, you know, trying to get him into one of the other charter schools, or Peak to Peak, or Fairview. And, you know, there's long lists and very, very, very hard to get into for, you know, the people that want to, you know, an alternative. You know, so he, he started at Eldorado, went to Monarch. He didn't attend school very much. We had to pull him out and homeschool him. He was bullied. You know, he has, he had some different views than, you know, a lot of the other kids in the school, and his ideas were not embraced. The teachers did not embrace him. You know, so he, he felt bullied. And, you know, and I think the, the Ascent Charter School might have been a better place for him. I know it'll be a better place for my daughter if we could get her in, if, if you approve this, and I hope you do. There's just a lot of options, you know, that, that people need and want, and I think this is another option. For, you know, Boulder Valley area is a very diverse and welcoming area, so I hope that, that you will welcome them, and they could be a, a good, good citizen in our community. Thanks for your time.
Okay, and Laura had asked me to actually do two names at a time so the next person would be ready. So Marie Clark and then Christine Johnson.
Can you hear me? Hello, Boulder Valley School District Board. My name is Marie Clark, and I am a resident in your district. Donna, you are my representative. I have three children currently enrolled in our community school. They've been enrolled there for five years, and we love our school. We have no complaints against our school. We love our principal, and the teachers have been wonderful. However, a few months ago, I heard that Ascent Charter School was coming, and I, my husband and I were extremely excited about this prospect. We knew immediately when a classical curriculum school was coming that we would put our children in it, no questions asked. I did want to say, in response to some of the discrimination things that I've seen on social media and that have been swirling around, it makes me very sad to hear this, because I know a lot of people doing the classical curriculum, and they do not bear any resemblance to this kind of discrimination that they have been accused of. I also know that you guys have received dozens of letters from parents who currently attend the Golden View School, attesting to this, that even some of their children have been bullied in different school systems, and they have not experienced the bullying here. I'm disappointed to hear the difference in Rob Anderson's recommendation today, and I want to ask you, please, to support Ascent School starting. A lot of people are coming. I feel like, what I'm hearing is what I would call imperialism, educational imperialism, where you have a group of people over here who feel that they have authority to influence what I am doing with my children. And I just ask you to stop the educational imperialism and get these people out of my space, and help me to make a decision for my children that I feel is best. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you will support Ascent Classical School.
Christine Johnson?
Hi, I'm reading a statement from Dr. Krishna Patisapu, Director of Diversity, Recruitment, and Retention at CU Boulder School of Education, and Vice President of the Board of Directors at Out Boulder County. And you've received a copy of this. "As an educator, queer woman of color, and a longtime advocate for queer youth, I am vehemently opposed to the addition of Ascent Classical Academy to the BVSD community. ACA has direct ties to Hillsdale College, an institution of higher education that has been publicly praised for its anti-queer policies. In the several years I've spent working with queer youth in Boulder County, I have learned that many families have chosen to relocate to Boulder due to BVSD's exceptional policies around inclusivity and support for queer youth. BVSD has worked with a number of, of queer youth advocacy organizations, including Queer Endeavor, Out Boulder County, Oasis Ties, and the Safe Schools Coalition to develop and sustain these policies. Accepting ACA's application for charter would solely BVSD's reputation as a beacon of equity for LGBT youth. Hundreds of studies in education prove that access to inclusive and accepting school environments is essential to the health and we, well-being of queer students. A 2011 study shows that college students who had access to Gay-Straight Alliance while in high school reported significantly lower instances of mental illness and alcohol abuse. A 2013 study argued that victimization of queer youth contributed to lower academic outcomes and lower self-esteem, but school-based supports contributed to lower victimization and better academic outcomes. And finally, Glisten's 2017 school survey showed that queer youth who attend schools that have affirming curricula are more likely to feel safe at school than those who do not. One thing I wanted to call out is, in the curricular plans for the school, is a textbook called Why Johnny Can't Tell Right From Wrong, which states many multicultural-
Sorry, okay. Our next speaker is Louisa Mathias, followed by Tina Mu.
Good evening. I'm Louisa Mathias, a retired educator and co-chair of the Boulder County NAACP Education Committee, a Boulder resident. And in, in responding to the Ascent Classical Academy application, I'm wondering if ACA is a school Boulder, a majority of Boulder taxpayers want to support. As we know, ACA is part of the Barney Charter School Initiative, developed by Hillsdale College, a private religiously oriented school. BVS currently supports a wide variety of charter and focus schools, which were proposed by BBS, BVSD parents. They have no political or religious orientation. It should stay that way. In their review of the application, BVSD staff expressed strong concern as to whether ACA would refrain from promoting specific religious viewpoints, whether they would treat LGBTQ students and staff with inclusion, whether they would provide a learning environment supportive of the needs of students of color, students learning English, students with learning challenges, and students of poverty. ACA responded with a nebulous, with nebulous- ACs, ACA responded with a nebulous, with nebulous answers. The BVSD residents of the local NAACP agree with the national NAACP policy, uh, response that calls for a moratorium on, uh, on the approval of new charter schools due to their negative impacts on students of color. We are concerned that ACA will not work toward the narrowing of the opportunity gap experienced by the underserved students of BVSD. Over the MLK, uh, K weekend, we were able to gather over eighty-seven signatures of taxpayers who support the NAACP position. These signatures were given to Laura, asking the board to not support granting a charter to Ascent Classical Academy. Thank you for your dedication.
Tina Mu.
President Marquess and members of our school board, I'm Tina Mu, former BVEA president. I believe that accepting Ascent Charter School Academy into BVSD sets undesirable precedent for how we work with our BVSD community, threatens the healthy balance we've attained with our own BVSD charter schools, and flies in the face of BVSD's ingrained practices of respect for students and employees. I think you've given more than ample consideration to this application, and now is the time to roundly deny it. Our current BVEA leadership has urged you to deny this application, as has our own District Accountability Committee and BVSD staff. Powerful community voices, including the NAACP, are all very dismayed at the prospect of an entity so anathema to our collective community values strong-arming its way into BVSD. Ignoring this overwhelming community message is not in keeping with the democratic processes that have guided policymaking here. We cannot paint our charter schools with a broad brush. Some spring from parents within district communities who want to remain part of their communities. Others are interested only in parasitizing districts with no desire to actually benefit them in any way. And have, and BVSD's current charters do want to be part of our community and have shown a willingness to move forward with us in a way that supports many shared values. Ascent Charter Academy saying, "Accept us first with all waivers we want and then we'll see," has already shown itself to be the type of institutional charter interested only in using our resources without honoring our values. BVEA supports good working conditions for and the rights of our colleagues' teaching and charters. BVEA fully embraces our BVSD non-discrimination policy for staff and students, a critical piece in establishing safe, working, learning conditions. We are doubtful about Ascent Charter Academy's ability to accept and participate in this aspect of BVSD culture. You need to vote this application down. Thank you.
Melanie Fuller, followed by Annie Pell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I appreciate it. Um, I'm actually a Boulder County native, and I'm a proud product of BVSD schools. I sat in this very room about twenty years ago as a member of the Centauras High School Student Council, so it's nice to be back. Um, I'm a mom now of three kids, ages eleven, nine, and one, and I stand before you tonight asking you to uphold my right to choose. Um, I value to choose the best way to educate my children, and I know you do too. If someone doesn't think, uh, Ascent Academy would be a good place for their child, they simply don't have to go. Um, but simply having the school exist to allow the near six hundred BVSD families the option to attend is not discriminati- discrimination, excuse me. It's providing choices for all of the children who live within BVSD. We currently homeschool, and we open enroll to the Apex Program in the St. Vrain Valley School District because there just isn't a great option for our kids in Boulder Valley. I heard what Dr. Anderson said about discrimination, and I'd like to say that I do fear discrimination against my own children for their beliefs if they attend a public school. Discrimination happens to all kids and on all sides of the coin, not just some. By providing lots of options for all types of families, we can move away from bullying and embrace true equality for all of our students. As a BVSD resident, we would love to be at a school close to home. Ascent is that school, and I'm asking you to approve its application. Please give all parents the right to choose when it comes to their child's education. Thank you.
Annie Pell.
Hello. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I am a mom of three children. Two of them go to, uh, Community Montessori, a focus school here in BVSD. I truly appreciate that having a school whose pedagogy serves my kids' various needs. We are an interracial family. Two of my children are African-American. Two of my children are on IEPs. One of my children has very significant special needs. The school fits us, but it ends at fifth grade. I'm looking at Ascent as an option for my family with various needs, and I'm terrified of the possibility of racism and bullying as they go on. Unfortunately, the reports from other schools have not always been positive. The principal intervention has not always been there when there has been racism. And I feel very excited about a small school who has core values in character development, and from the very top, bottom, and across all of the teachers, there's going to be intervention for behavior. I also would like to say that I would hope that that kind of character would also lead to a very inclusive community. I don't know where the facts are to say that this school will discriminate, but I don't see any facts. And even if there was a founder who was Christian that has created a secular form of school, it seems strange to me. That feels like discrimination. Maria Montessori was a Catholic. She created a secular model of education. My kids enjoy that very secular model of education. So I hope that we don't discriminate against founders, um, for their personal beliefs. And I also hope that we can give every parent the right to choose what is best for their children here in our district. Thank you so much.
Hey, Pam Ferrone, followed by Heidi Ganal.
Hello, thank you. I'm Pam Ferrone, and I grew up here in Boulder. I went to Eisenhower Elementary School, Burbank Junior High, back when it was, uh, before it was Manhattan Middle School, and I graduated from Fairview High School. Uh, my mom served as a teacher here for BVSD for twenty-five years. Um, and I have to tell you, for the first time in my life, I'm wondering if I really belong here anymore. Um, I'm homeschooling my son after we have been trying, uh, we've tried public and a private school. Um, and the classical curriculum at home is really working for him. Um, it just does. He's kind of wired differently, and he needs that structure, and he needs that really content-rich, um, curriculum that the classical school provides. Um, but what I really want for him is to have a community, and I want him to have, I want him to go to school, and I want him to have a recess, but he needs this, this classical curriculum. Um, one of the biggest reasons I wanted him to go to this school is, um, because the Ascent School, they put such an emphasis on virtue and character development, and that is so important to us, um, as a family. Um, after looking at some of the posts on social media, I did a little research on Hillsdale College because I know it's, um, you know, kind of a point I was reading on social media. Uh, I did want to say that they were the first college to prohibit discrimination based on sex, religion, or race in their admissions process. The first. They were the first college or university to allow women to earn a liberal arts degree. And when African-American players were not allowed on the field during the Tangerine Bowl, during the Civil Rights Movement, the Hillsdale team refused to play. So I think that needs to be considered. There's a lot of fear around Hillsdale, but I think, um, we need to look at that too. Thank you. I hope you'll vote for it.
Heidi Ganal.
Hi, everyone. I'm Heidi Ganal. I'm a mom of four in Superior. As you guys know, I'm a CU Regent. I'm a, on the Board of Directors for Color Succeeds, Teach for America, and the Governor's School Safety Committee. I have something written out that I want to talk about, about what we've experienced as the leaders of this effort to open the school over the last week. It's been terrible. But first, I want to talk to you, Dr. Anderson. We have bent over backwards to give you any piece of information that you needed. We have replied to every question, every email that we've gotten. I have been on every thread. I'm on the board of a five-billion-dollar organization, and the amount of effort we've put in is unheard of to supply a board this much information on a school or an effort in our community. And this makes it personal because I'm a mom, and my three kids are not doing well at Superior Elementary. And I need another option. And here I am, working my tail off around the state, trying to create choices for children so they can live the American dream like I did. And guess what? I can't do it in my own county. I can't do it at my home, so I'm going to have to move to get them that choice. BS on the waivers. BS. We have actively, we have absolutely told you we would work with you on those, but in the context of the contract negotiations, that is an excuse. I'm sorry if I'm fired up. I'm not typically like this. I'm usually a happy warrior, but I am, this is personal. It's my children. And it's six hundred and twenty-five other children that want to go to this school. It's an amazing school. It's an opportunity for children that are underserved in this community, whether they're children of color or LGBTQ. Sorry, I can't say it right now. We love all of you. We love all of you, and we want all of you to be welcome at our school, and it's an incredible environment. Go step into Golden View or Douglas County's Ascent Schools, and you'll see for yourself. That's what sold me. That's what sold me. The children love learning there. They love it there, and I want that for my children. And so do all these other families. We do not discriminate. That is a bunch of you-know-what. So I don't know where you're getting that, but it's not true. Please approve this school. Don't cave, Dr. Anderson.
Megan McNamara, followed by Emily Lewis. Okay, let's please not do applause or, I know we have strong feelings, but every time we do that, it makes someone else feel not as welcome or respected or listened to.
Hi, my name is Megan McNamara, and I'm here to voice my support for the new Ascent Classical Academy in Flatirons to be accept, accepted by Boulder Valley School District. I believe another charter school is much needed in Boulder Valley, and I am excited that this school offers education for grades K through twelve. My daughter is in first grade, and there were some unfortunate experiences at BVSD's school that led my husband and I to take her out of school in November. We're currently homeschooling and looking for an alternative, and this school seems to fit the bill. I'm specifically very impressed with the low-technology focus. And I'm also aware that you guys have received dozens of letters, um, of approval for this school from GBCA and ACAD parents testifying about their personal experiences. I read these letters myself, and these parents have stated how inclusive, safe, caring, welcoming, and diverse the school environment is. What struck me most were their statements about the fact that these schools were the first public schools that their children were not bullied at. I'm here tonight to express interest in this new school and consider it our first and only choice in getting our daughter back into the school system for next year. So I implore the board to move forward with accepting this initiative. Thank you.
Emily Lewis.
Just side, just pick one. Hello, board. Thank you so much. I apologize in advance for my lack of eloquence. Um, I didn't know how long I was going to speak, um, so I just will try to hit a couple of points. Um, for, for me, um, the BVSD pillars of acceptance, tolerance, and inclusivity are undeniably important for all of us. And, um, I think what I'm experiencing tonight is a lot of assumptions are being made by where we're coming from as individuals, um, what our backgrounds are. Um, just because I'm blonde, blue-eyed Caucasian, that I must be A, B, and C. Um, and I just want to let you guys know that that's, we need to get beyond that. If acceptance, tolerance, inclu- and inclusivity are truly important to BVSD, then, um, that's what we need to be about, and that means across the board. It doesn't mean my way or the highway. It means accepting everybody from every background and loving everybody from every background. Um, my daughter is in fourth grade, and she's doing okay. The eye-ready would tell you different. Um, but she's doing okay. Um, her reading is not superb, um, but she's definitely, uh, made some really great strides this year. She has a really excellent teacher in fourth grade. Um, is she thriving? I think she's doing really pretty good this year. Um, could she do better? Is there something else out there? Maybe. And as a parent here, I would love that option, to be able to choose Ascent Classical Academy for her. Maybe next year, maybe two years from now. I don't know. But I want what's best for my daughter, and if it means, sorry, thriving.
Lindsay Potts.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Potts of Lafayette. I spoke to you two weeks ago, asking for the approval of ACAF. And to reinforce this desire, um, for the school's approval, I am going to read an excerpt from Martin Luther King Jr.'s nineteen forty-seven essay titled "The Purpose of Education." "It seems to me that education has a twofold function, to perform in life of man and in society. The one is utility, and the other is culture. Education must enable a man to become more efficient, to achieve with increasing facility the legitimate goals of his life. Education must also train one for quick, resolute, and effective thinking. To think incisively and to think for oneself is very difficult. We are prone to let our mental life become invaded by legions of half-truths, prejudices, and propaganda. At this point, I often wonder whether or not education is fulfilling its purpose. A great majority of the so-called educated people do not think logically and scientifically. Even the press, the classroom, the platform, and the pulpit in many instances do not give us objective and unbiased truths. To save man from the morass of propaganda, in my opinion, is one of the chief aims of education. Education must enable one to sift and weigh evidence, to discern the truth from the false, the real from the unreal, and the facts from the fiction. The function of education, therefore, is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. But education which stops with efficiency may prove the greatest menace to society. The most dangerous criminal may be the man gifted with reason, but with no morals. We must remember that intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. The complete education gives one not only the power of concentration, but worthy objectives upon which to concentrate. The broad education will therefore transmit to one not only the accumulated knowledge of the race, but also the accumulated experience of social living. ACAF is seeking to provide the education Martin Luther King Jr. describes."
Mike Malia.
Hi, my name is Mike. I live in Louisville. Uh, my wife and I are homeschooling our son with a classical curriculum. We're advocates for classical education. My son absolutely loves it. Since we follow the same curriculum as Golden View Academy, we've taught him about cultures from all over the world. He's learned about historical women and men from diverse backgrounds. He's studied many religions like Buddhism, Christianity, Islam, Judaism, and Hinduism. We've watched him make amazing connections about how culture, art, music, and history are all intertwined. I've been attending Ascent informational meetings for the past year. Many social media posts about this school over the weekend were inconsistent with what I've been told or what I found out on the BVSD Board website. There have also been a lot of assumptions about how this school will behave if the charter is approved. I spoke to a number of parents from both Douglas and Golden Classical Schools over the last year. I did not hear any of the terrible things people are saying will transpire in those two schools. I've heard the opposite. I've heard a number of stories from parents with children that had learning challenges that have thrived in the classical environment. When someone from my family is ill or needs care, we go to a Vista Hospital, a Christian hospital in Louisville. When we need care, we're treated with medicine, not religion. Just because an organization has religious ties, it doesn't mean they're pushing a religious agenda. The other two classical schools have never had this issue. They've never had, they've never had a discrimination claim filed against them. I don't see an evil master plan here. I don't see discriminatory parents. I see parents who are looking for what they see as the best education for their children, parents who are concerned about the amount of screen time their kids are exposed to, parents who have taken notice that Golden View broke into the top ten schools in the state for SAT scores in only four years, parents who want another choice. I'm here tonight because I want my son to attend a classical, secular, low-tech school, a type of school that currently does not exist in BVSD. Thank you.
Okay, Anna Segura.
Hello. Um, I'm very concerned to hear about the pro-gun and pro-intolerant school that has filed a charter school application with BVSD. I encourage you to reject their application as they have not demonstrated that they will be run by nor serve Boulder- be run by nor serve Boulder Valley School District residents in a manner that is consistent with the values of our district. Barney Charter School Initiative supports arming teachers, a misguided and dangerous idea that will put BVSD students at risk. They also promote values of intolerance towards people of color and LBGQ populations. A 2008 RAN study analyzing NYPD officer shootings hit rate, which is the number of rounds that hit a suspect out of the total shots fired, hit rates ranged from 18 to 37%. If trained NYPD police professionals miss their targets 63 to 82% of the time, then relatively untrained teachers will miss their targets more often. In a school environment, misfired bullets put innocent student lives at risk and the proliferation of guns in schools will only create confusion and increase risks of student or teachers being shot when police officers arrive on the scene. This is not how I want my tax dollars used. Please vote no on the ACA charter application. Thank you.
Jason DeScali. Sorry about that.
Hello, everybody. I'm actually a 1988 graduate of Boulder High School and I have two children in BVSD at the time and I, one of my, I hear a lot of people talking about discrimination. I'm here because of education and what I'm seeing, my son has an IEP. My daughter does well because she can fit into the one, one, I guess, curriculum fits all. There's no maneuvering. I'm a coach and as a coach, you put the players in their best positions. You don't try to fit them in to what you want. And that's what I see with BVSD. That's what it comes down to. I don't ask you guys to teach my kid about being social moral man. That's my job. Your job is to teach them how to read and write. Right now, my son's about to go into high school and he cannot write. He cannot write cursive because he has an IEP and dyslexic kids can't pick the pencil up and write. So what does that do to him? We have group training where they have to, he has to read aloud. These are things that prohibit education. That's discrimination. When you have to fit every kid into the same box. You don't need to teach my kids about inclusion. That's my job. My job is to teach my kid to be a strong member of society, male and female. They're both athletes and, you know, we're very concerned about my son. He does well with his IEP and we have to fight every year to keep it. They wanna take him off because he does well. I mean, you're providing him with a tool that makes him be better and you wanna take it away to give, because he's, actually it's working. So I want the option to make a choice and that's why we live in America, to choose what we want. And all we're asking is let us educate our kids ourselves. God bless all the parents that homeschool their kids. I couldn't do it. That's why they're in BVSD and I'll be honest with you, because they would if I could handle it. I can't do it myself. That's why we ask you and that's why we give you our money. Thank you.
Beth Paulson.
Good evening. I'm a parent who has lived in this community for the last 13 years and I want Ascend Classical Academy approved so that it is available to my family as an option for education. In fact, my husband and I felt so strongly about a classical education, we drove nearly two hours daily so our children could attend the classical school in Golden, Colorado when it opened. Because the burden of driving was so great on all of us, we could not continue. We attended for two years because we feel very deeply about our children's education being classical. Instead, we provide classical education at home and our children are doing well, but they do not get the rich discussions that classroom provides. I have seen on Facebook that there are powerful special interest groups who have organized against the school. These groups are highly organized political groups with lots of money and they operate on the state and national level. We are just a group of parents in a community trying to do what we feel is best for our children. These groups use fear and lots of money to oppose and where fear isn't enough, they use intimidation. The reasons they give opposing the school are not even grounded in the reality nor the framework that has been laid out for this new school. The accusations that the school in Golden promotes a religious instruction are unfounded. My children were actually there for two years and did not get religious instruction. They got a classical education which was rich and rigorous. Their experience included teacher-led, engaging discussion with student participation. The focus is largely on the beauty found in literature, language, history and science. One cannot argue with achievement. After four years, GVCA is in the top 10 for schools in Colorado for the SAT score. Teachers bring academic students, subjects to life with passion that make classes enjoyable. Our experience was without discrimination. Across the board, we as a family were welcomed and my kids were included. If you say no to a classical academy, you are saying yes to special interest groups coming into our community, forcing their will upon us and their organized power backed by considerable funds. Please approve Classical Ascend.
Gary Cooper.
My name is Gary Cooper and I live in Lafayette. My grandson August is going into kindergarten this year and wants to attend a quality institution. Ascend Classical Charter School will be that quality institution. Proof that this is possible is the fact that this group has already established two other quality schools. Any banker looks to the experience and success of an applicant in order to determine an expectation of continued expense, success. The same approach should be applied to this charter application. There are 541 public high schools in Colorado. Of those, 67 are public charter schools. Out of the top 10 ranked high schools in the state, five are charter schools. Out of the top 50, over 25 are again charter schools. It is obvious that charter schools provide a consistently high educational platform, so why is there such resistance to another charter school in the Boulder County School District? Primarily resistance comes from the administration and the teachers' unions. I'm reminded of a comment made some years ago by the president of the Chicago Teachers' Union when he said, "I will start supporting students when they start paying dues. Until then, I will support the teachers." The teachers and the teachers' union are not supporting our children. The support for our children is the obligation of youth of BVSD Board. Despite all the lies suddenly on social media, there should not be a moment's hesitation in endorsing this charter school application. The applicants are proven capable. The 600 families who have stepped forward to request the opportunity for the education of their choice should be heard. And with the approval of this school, Boulder Valley will have the opportunity to experience a second top 10 state-ranked school, joining peak-to-peak in representing this district and its forward-thinking. Thank you.
Dawn Wilson.
Tonight, we have a very important decision to make as to whether allow Ascend to have a place among the schools here at BVSD. As a mother who has both homeschooled her children and using the classical method and also placing her children in public school, I think I have a unique perspective on both. Classical education is distinctive in that it gives children a wide range of knowledge of many things. It starts out with small nuggets or pegs of information. I prefer to call them seeds. These seeds plant information that will later be covered in more depth and so those seeds grow into larger plants of knowledge. Things that my five-year-old is learning or has learned, my eighth grader is now learning this year in public school. Things like the layers of the geosphere and atmosphere in science, the preamble of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights in social studies. With only slight prompting, my eighth grader remembers the things that he learned during his time of homeschooling and it has helped him in school. I believe that his years of classical learning has dramatically helped him in his schooling, especially since he is dyslexic and has a fourth-grade reading level. Even with this disability, as some would call it, he has been on counselor's honor roll two of the three trimesters of his first year of public school and on the principal's honor roll all three trimesters last year. To give you an idea of the classical education that my five-year-old is learning, she has skipped counting up to the 15s in math as well as doing squares, cubes and learning liquid and linear measurements. In science, she is learning about the classification of living things, including vertebrates, invertebrates, seed-bearing plants. She has learned major parts of the plant and animal cell. In history and geography, she's learned about ancient civilizations, the Greeks, the Romans, Asians, African civilizations, major religions and their origins. She has learned Latin, which will not only help her with the SAT but also in learning Latin-based languages, Spanish, French, Italian. Ascend Classical would continue this type of education to all who desire to attend. People confusing classical education as a whole with classical conversation. Is that my thing? Okay, so please accept it.
Okay, Gail Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Gail Johnson. I'm here to urge the Board strongly to deny this Ascend application for charter school. I'm gonna go off book and just respond to some of the things that have been said tonight. I'm not even on Facebook. I haven't read a single social media post about this controversy that's presented to you tonight. What I have read are the application materials, the responses to the concerns expressed by the Board and the various committees involved. I don't even know their names. And I find them very troubling in a couple of different respects. First of all, I find it ironic that the school is named Ascend. We think of Ascend to ascending to higher ground, particularly in this wonderful state where we ascend mountains to higher ground. But I feel like this application is taking us to lower ground. There've been a lot of talk tonight about, "We don't discriminate. There's no intent to discriminate." But the proof is in the pudding. If they didn't intend to discriminate, then they wouldn't be asking for a waiver of BVSD's excellent protections for LGBTQ youth. And I am also a civil rights attorney. I'm a mom. My son is at Fairview. I live in South Boulder. And I can tell you as an attorney, when I read the Ascend applicant's response to why they want a waiver, it's coded language. We want the ability to discriminate. It's that simple. Because what they say is, "We will comply with the law." The law is not as protective right now as BVSD's policies. It's wonderful that we live in a district that has such protective policies and it is indeed the reason why, for example, parents of trans youth who are able to afford to move to our community do so from all over the country to make sure that their kids can learn in a safe environment. I'm proud to live in this community that has such protections and I'm not part of a special interest group. And finally, I see my times running down. I also read a very concerning language about sexual education for high school students and language, I know we have to use the [inaudible]. Thank you.
Jenna Howerton. Is Jenna here? Okay. And I apologize in advance. Brad Swartzvelter.
That's close. I talked a couple of weeks ago, so you folks already know that I've got a daughter at Superior Elementary School and we're fairly pleased. Her learning style doesn't work extremely well in the system there and so we're looking for a change that's very much more structured and we think it'll help her thrive. We really do. I hear an awful lot of concern about this Ascend being discriminatory. And I've been to Golden, there's no discrimination, but I'll make a deal with you. Go ahead and approve it. Approve the school. And if there's even a hint of discrimination or favoritism for anything, for religion, for sexual orientation, for any racial bias or native language or country of origin, for anything, I'll be the first one to stand up, ask them to close their doors and fight them. Because I know they're not gonna do it. And I think you do too. So my question is, what are you really afraid of? Are you really afraid of discrimination if you vote against it? Or are you afraid of something else? I'm a labor union officer. There's nothing I fear more for my labor union than free-market competition. And I've got a feeling that there might be some of that going on. I encourage you not to be afraid. This school, I believe, is gonna be a great thing for my daughter and I need it. And I ask you to give it to us. And if you don't wanna give it to us and it's because of discrimination, trust me, we won't let it happen. And if it does, we'll shut it down. That's all I got.
Ann Morril.
Hi, my name's Ann Morril. I've had two children through Boulder Valley School District schools, Manhattan Boulder, Boulder High, Monarch, K8, Monarch High School. I'm also a teacher in a charter school. I'm supportive of charter schools. I'm, sent my kids to public schools, not charter public schools. I'm supportive of classical education. What I'm not supportive is wanting a waiver to a discrimination, the policies that we have in Boulder County that we've worked so hard for. My son was part of the first Allies group at Manhattan Middle School that Barb started. I don't know if she's here, but he's 20 years old now, a student at NYU and he met with her because she means so much to him. He is a student that didn't necessarily find a community until he found Manhattan and the Allies Club. It's a gay-straight alliance. I was on social media and I saw an ad pop up for Ascend. I wasn't even that familiar with it. I'm pretty busy as a teacher and I'm pretty busy because my son just left. And I asked about the discrimination policy and, because I'd heard some rumblings, but I wasn't that aware what was going on. And they wrote back and assured me that they had one and they spelled it out. And I said, "Great, then you wouldn't mind if there was a gay-straight alliance or an Allies Club?" And I didn't get a response. I asked again and other people put up information. They weren't out-of-town interests, they were out Boulder. People were incredibly, incredibly hard to make sure that our LGBT community here is safe. And the entire thread disappeared. So I went to their frequently asked question site and I put up, "Why did this disappear?" I wrote them directly. They refused to respond to me. I was very respectful. My son found a safe place. He also learned an incredible amount in our schools. I wanna say one thing quickly.
No, you gotta do by email. I'm sorry. Graham Clark.
My name's Graham Clark and I'd like to give my time to Robert.
Does that work? And I have two more minutes.
That doesn't work. Sorry.
Are those, is?
Yeah, you have to have told the Board Secretary prior to sign up.
That has to happen. Okay, so then when does my two minutes start? I'll take just these, can he give me these two minutes now? Because I am speaking in a couple of minutes anyway. All right, in a couple of people.
How do we handle that?
I'm happy to go.
You're already on the list?
I'm happy to go later if you'd like.
Okay, so you're just giving two minutes, you can go four minutes. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So I can go four minutes? Okay, thank you. My name?
You're Gero, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. My name is Robert Gero and I am the principal of Goldenview Classical Academy, the first BCSI school in Colorado and the model for Ascend and a school that received a letter of support from then Congressman Jared Polis. I have direct knowledge not only of the curriculum but of the people involved with Ascend and those involved with BCSI. I'm saddened and frustrated to hear the misstatements on display this evening and I respectfully disagree with the superintendent's new opinion. Some of the statements and some of the comments I saw this weekend on social media and here tonight do illustrate a well-meaning stance against hate, stance I share. I admit that if what they said were true about Ascend or BCSI, I would be concerned about approving such a school in Boulder. But I am thankful that what has been claimed is not true and I urge the Board to support Ascend's application. Some have claimed that Ascend's classical curriculum will not serve the needs of a racially diverse population and that is flatly untrue. BCSI has a diverse portfolio of schools. The overall non-white percentage of students across the country is 40%, with the overall percentage of free and reduced lunch students about 25%. Some schools are over 80%. Savannah Classical Academy in Georgia is closing the achievement gap with a diverse student population, over 75% FRL. Founder's Classical Academy in Dallas is doing the same with a large immigrant, sometimes transient and even homeless student population. And Ho Academy will be doing the same with a predominantly Native American population in New Mexico. I have spoken with the leadership of these schools and they testify to the fact that BCSI and its curriculum meet the needs of their communities that are seeking a classical education in matter of the race, class or home language of the student body. These schools are pictures of inclusivity. Like them, Ascend will reflect the student population that exists here in Boulder and over which they individually have no control. There is one other thing I do want to address this evening and I wish I did not have to. The Board has been contacted by a citizen who used to serve on the Goldenview Classical Academy Board of Directors. This person was a friend and a colleague of mine whom I respected greatly. Unfortunately, over the course of time, I fear the specific issues she raised with you and I fear she will raise again in public comment tonight became all-consuming. GVCA's Board of Directors investigated her concerns fully and relying on independent counsel put her concerns to rest, not only to GVCA's Board satisfaction, but to the total and complete satisfaction of Jefferson County Public Schools, the Charter School Institute and the Jefferson County District Attorney. At that point, her concerns were officially and fully resolved, but sadly she pursued it to the point that the GVCA Board of Directors removed her for what I believe was a breach of fiduciary duty. That is a fuller context of her communication with the BVSD Board that has already taken place and of what I gather will take place again this evening. And of what I gather, will take place again this evening. But back to the positive. You and our community want a school that closes the achievement gap, that is inclusive of diverse beliefs and identities, and that draws people together around shared principles. The good news is, this is precisely what Ascent offers. As Boulder writes, "We take pride in our inclusivity and openness to different viewpoints." The board has an opportunity this evening to illustrate that spirit by approving Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons. Thank you.
Jake Mutz. And I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Thank you guys for letting us comment on this tonight. I, my wife and I and our five kids live in North Boulder. We have two third graders who've gone to our neighborhood elementary school, and then a kindergartner, and a four-year-old and two-year-old, so. Sorry, I'm more nervous than I thought. I, I guess, and so they start out in our neighborhood school, and then the, this last year have been homeschooled. And tonight, I think I've just found the, the lack of tolerance in some of the comments just unsettling. And it just, it feels to me like there's not a level of openness to allow other people to go make their own choices. And, you know, as a parent, I just want the opportunity for, for choice for my kids. And we've investigated the classical curriculum. And that was some of what our homeschool curriculum was. And we, we want the opportunity to be able to go do that. Anyone who, who doesn't fit in well with that, I mean, certainly doesn't have to go, go there. And, you know, we are concerned about character development, and certainly appreciative of the, the low-tech focus there. So I encourage you guys to go and, and approve the school. And certainly understand the, the record isn't one that shows one of discrimination, but really shows one of, of giving opportunities to kids, so thank you.
Derek Rieger.
Good evening. My name is Derek Rieger. I am a graduate of the University of Colorado, and I have lived and worked in Boulder County for the past twenty-five years. My wife and children are also active in this community. All of my children play recreational sports through Lafayette Rec. Both of my daughters attend Reverend's Academy of Dance in Lafayette. My son's Boy Scout troop meets in Lafayette. My family goes to church in Lafayette. We also frequently dine and shop in Lafayette. This is our community. As our firstborn was approaching school age ten years ago, my wife and I decided that a classical education would be best for our children. There are other classical schools in the Denver metro area that we could send our kids to, but not within Boulder County. It is our belief that we would not have the capacity to be active in all those community activities previously listed if we had to commute between one and two hours each school day. This was a significant reason behind our decision to homeschool. We love this community. And we would love to have a public classical education option for ourselves and for others in this community. To the board, and to the parents of students in the BVSD, my children live in the same community as your children. They play soccer and basketball, they dance, they go to church, they eat, they shop, they serve with your children. I believe you will make the best decision for your children and for their education. And I ask that you grant me the same respect. So respectfully ask that you please approve Ascent. Thank you.
Pete Rodriguez.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Pete Rodriguez, a BVSD parent, an ardent charter school supporter, and one of the original founders of Goldenview Classical Academy. I served on the Goldenview Board for three years. A charter school board is vital for, a charter school board that has sound governance is vital for a charter school. A charter school needs charter boards that understand their fiduciary duties to the public because they're entrusted with the responsible, transparent oversight of public funds. Derek Schuler, as ACA's director, is asking the BVSD school board to entrust his organization with millions of dollars. While serving on the Goldenview Board last year, I became aware that Mr. Schuler, as Goldenview's board chair, has been, had been using Goldenview funds for some of his ACA-related startup expenses. He did not have board approval. He did not report to the board that he was using funds in this way. I attempted to hold him accountable by repeatedly insisting on an open, public board discussion to address his use of Goldenview funds. Instead of honoring this request, he resisted. I was the only board member willing to oppose him and was ultimately removed from the board. Charter school board members should be able to openly discuss every penny entrusted to them. Transparency and accountability are key to good governance. And this did not happen on the Goldenview Board under Mr. Schuler. Dr. Robert Garrow has previously spoken about me, and his statement contains several misstatements which I am happy to address with you in great detail if you should so desire. A Barney Classical Charter School would be an outstanding opportunity for interested families in the Boulder Valley School District. Just not under ACA's control. Thank you.
Katie Farin.
Hello. I'm a mother of two children, ages four and a half and three. I am not a highly powerful self-interest, as was mentioned earlier. My oldest is about to enter BVSD. I'm a newbie, I don't know the system, I don't know what's in store for us. I don't really even know who they're going to be yet. I understand that BVSD is giving a second review of this school's application. And there's plenty of information out there that gives me a lot of concern. And I urge you to reject the application, just as Adams Twelve recently did. My biggest concerns are that Boulder County already struggles to create a welcoming, equitable environment for people and students of color. The philosophy of this school is one of anti-equity, anti-diversity, of thought, race, sexual orientation, gender conformity, and religious belief. Which is exactly the opposite of the work that we need to be engaging in, in our community at this time. Further, as Anna mentioned earlier, Ascent advocates arming teachers and staff, something that I'm adamantly opposed to, keeps me up at night. And to the woman who said that if you don't like it, you don't have to go, you don't have to send your kids to that school, and that's the end of it. That's not true. We would be paying taxes. And even if my kids aren't there, it affects all of us because we're part of a community. So, you know, I'm worried that we don't know what we fundamentally agree on as a community. Do we believe that LGBTQ students should feel welcomed here? And do those values show up demonstrably in our community, in the decisions we make? Why are they asking for a waiver? Why? Why do they need a waiver? Are you hearing from directly impacted students? There's a transgender girl at the top of the hour. She should guide you. I want to make sure that you're hearing from directly impacted, we're a pretty homogeneous group here, including people that say there's no discrimination. They're not targeted.
Lori Albright.
Good evening. I want to thank Dr. Anderson for your comments earlier about your recommendation and changing it. You know, it's really tough when you have to make a decision. And I think what you, what it appears that you did was dig a little bit deeper into what the application is about and what the impact on our community would be. So thank you for being open and considering it really thoroughly. I wrote a letter to the Daily Camera, which was printed this morning. And I was really pleasantly surprised to find that a whole bunch of people contacted me and said, "Gosh, it was nice to hear from you," and I certainly agree with what you had to say. I was concerned about the charter school, as you might imagine. I shouldn't have been surprised, however, I've been involved with this district for twenty-five years, including sitting where many of you have sat, including where Tina was as, as Chair of this board. I know what our community values. One of the things that's very clear to us is that we operate as a policy-driven board. And what that means is that policies come up. When there's a problem, people bring that issue to the forefront. And they bring it ultimately through a process at schools, through various committees, to come to this board. Those policies have been approved, vetted, examined, and finally, again, approved. So those are the policies that we act under. Not a policy that says, "Gosh, I think we'll figure it out later." Or, in fact, "We are asking for complete waivers," as this organization, this business wanted to do, first of all, but then has changed some of what their recommendations were about the policy being waived. But we're a way, we're a policy-driven organization, and that's where we should stand. So when an outside network with strong connections to a school in Michigan wants to waive those policies, we must conclude that their intentions are opposed to our policies. I heard speakers last week at the work session say that teachers in their schools were allowed to be armed. That's against our policy. They focus on sex ed curriculum that conflicts with our policy. Nice to be here.
Jenna Clinchard.
Thanks for having me tonight. I'm, my name's Jenna Clinchard, and I'm Jude's mom, the little one that testified earlier. I had something written out, but then I keep hearing, "Choice," and "Not fair that my child has this," and so I want to talk about that. So when Jude came out, we lived in Colorado Springs. And that was not the safest place for us to have Jude transition. And it's not that it wasn't fair, it was just a fact. They are not as progressive as Boulder Valley. They don't have the policies in place for transgender students. And they don't have policies in place for the LGBTQ community. So we moved, right? Like, that's a choice we made. We do have a freedom of choice as parents, you know? And Jude meant enough to us that, hey, if we, you know, if, if we need to go to another district, then that's what we have to do. I mean, you're right, we all do have choices, and that was the choice we made. And I know that moving can be hard, but, I mean, if it's that passionate, I feel like that's what we need to do. I didn't just move. Many, many other families have moved to Boulder Valley School District because of their transgender and LGBTQ youth. Many. They've moved here for their policy, they've moved from the East Coast, from the West Coast, from the Midwest, just to be in this school district so their children could be safe and feel safe, and know that the policies would back them when they were being discriminated in schools. And I don't think this school, I, I, I want you to vote no on this school. This school, I don't believe will accept LGBTQ community. And when they want our policies waived, that's a big red flag for me. BVSD is progressive. We found like-minded people here. I know this school will fit in great in another district, and they'll find like-minded people there. All districts are different. Thank you.
Cherry Anderson.
Heather, thank you for taking the time tonight. My name's Cherry Anderson. I'm the parent of two BVSD students. And I am a strong supporter of the value of free and equitable public education. We're hearing a lot about intentions and, and who knows, who knows what all the intentions are of various groups. But I am deeply, deeply concerned by the lack of transparency and accountability in the management structure proposed for this school. They would be meeting in Golden, there would be only one representative from the Boulder school. And there's no clear way for parents or the community at large to be involved in the decisions of the school. So that, for me, is definitely a huge red flag. And we've talked some about diversity and inclusion. And I make no claims about this curriculum, whether it could be diverse and inclusive. But the evidence that we do have shows that the campus in Golden does not reflect the diversity of the school district that it is a part of, and that those statistics were laid out in the DAC report. And so while the school does, has expressed a willingness to recruit a diverse population, it has not articulated a plan for doing so, which makes it unlikely to succeed. But even if it were to succeed, without knowing if there are good support plans in place, we don't know whether they will be able to serve those students. We have no data on their retention rates, as far as I know, for non-traditional students. And if those students find themselves not being served, then that will place an additional burden on our traditional public schools that would pick up the slack. Thank you.
Mary Quantz.
My name is Mary Quantz, and I am a doctoral student at CU Boulder School of Education and a former public middle school teacher. The nondiscrimination policy in BVSD, a policy Ascent Classical Academy wanted to waive, is comprehensive, mandating that there should be no discrimination based on race, ethnicity, gender, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, and ability. The Barney Charter Initiative, a project of Hillsdale College, and of which Ascent Classical Academy is a part, has no such aspirations. Part of their mission includes recovering our public schools from the tide of a hundred years of progressivism that has corrupted our nation's faithfulness to the previous teaching, the young, the liberal arts in the West. Classical Western education is rooted in white supremacy, valuing Western European culture and traditions over all others. ACA in Douglas County references parents to Kilpatrick's Why Johnny Can't Tell Right From Wrong, a book that is filled with homophobic language and disparaging remarks about religious minorities and people of color. Public schools should affirm and celebrate differences and diversity, provide support for marginalized students, such as students of color, bilingual students, LGBTQ students, and refugees. No religion should be promoted in public schools regardless of being cloaked under the classical Western education label. Please vote no on ACA.
Carol Hughes.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I am a BVSD resident and parent. I appreciate Dr. Anderson's words earlier about his change of mind. I came here to voice my support for our BVSD public schools and my opposition to the approval of this charter. I'm deeply concerned about the muddying of the waters that will occur if our public school district aligns with a school that has backing from Hillside College and the Barney Charter School Initiative, which are religious organizations. I'm very concerned about diverting already meager funds from existing schools to a school that gets this instructional methods and staff development from these organizations. I'm concerned about the waivers the Ascent Group seeks, as voiced so well earlier by speakers regarding the LGBTQ students and other minorities. Because charter schools operate under a different, under different regulations than typical public schools, I especially worry about how non-licensed teachers might meet the needs of twoe-gifted special education or other children with higher needs. I'm concerned about the lack of sex education in their abstinence-only approach. I'm concerned that, that Ascent backers support arming teachers along with the group Faster Colorado. I sincerely appreciate the parents who support this school and want choice. I believe there is a place for charter schools, and there already is choice in our district with our current open enrollment program. Regarding the special interests who oppose this application, it should not go unsaid that there are special interests from the far right that support this school. I strongly encourage the board to deny the application of this school that will divert funds from our already underfunded schools, fall under the close supervision of a religious organization with the agenda, and the lack of transparency from the applicants with regard to seeking waivers in their application. As stated earlier, it isn't as simple as, as not enrolling in the school. Tax dollars for public education should not be used by schools with religious affiliation. Thank you.
Sapita Miller, followed by Isadora Millard.
Hi. Author Barry Schwartz wrote a book called The Paradox of Choice, about consumer choices and how too many choices can sometimes lead to anxiety. Schwartz was discussing choices in a grocery store. If you have a choice among four bottles of ketchup on the shelf, you can probably pick one and be happy. However, if you have twenty-seven bottles, you'll always wonder if there was that bottle of organic ketchup that was better that you missed. As a parent of a second grader in BVSD, I looked at a few schools when we were choosing a kindergarten in the district. We chose a school, it worked out for a little while. But by the time my son was in first grade, he came home telling me he hated- grade, he came home telling me he hated school almost every day. He hoped it would get better, but my spouse and I started searching for other schools when it did not get better. We toured about six different schools last year, ultimately picking one that we hoped would work for him. In those tours, we experienced the variety the BVSD has to offer. We toured neighborhood schools, focus schools, and charter schools. One of the schools we toured was High Peaks Elementary. It is a focus school that follows the core knowledge sequence that seems to focus on some aspects of civics, language, arts, and history that some schools have described as an ideal curriculum for a classical school. Now, Ascent Classical Academy is here proposing a charter that provides a classical education, and I'm wondering if this is a meaningful choice or just one of the 27 bottles of ketchup making the decision-making process more difficult. A lot of parents, when choosing schools, will go to tools like GreatSchools.org or Great schools gives the schools numeric scores with higher scores being better. Ascent seems to be proud of Golden View Classical Academy in Golden. That school scores a six on Great Schools. High Peaks scores a nine.
Okay. Isadora Millard? You can always email.
Hi. My name is Isadora Millard. I am a proud BVSD graduate, and I have a sibling who is also attending BVSD. I am here on behalf of my family, who lives in Lafayette. Unfortunately, my mom couldn't be here, but she sounds left everyone in the room. Sitting here, listening to these speeches, I have come to the realization that this all boils down to one thing, which is fear. Fear has seemed to lead a lot of the opinions to the people opposed and even in support of the school, have and shared. I, like everybody in this room, understand fear, but I believe it is unfair that I must now dictate my own life based on the fear of other people and the fear these people think I should have. This, to me, is much more racist and degrading than any form of outright attack I have ever faced as a foreigner. All I want, I think all we all want in this room as parents and citizens, is to prepare our next generation for the world they will one day run, for a world, in my hopes, that will truly be anti-biased and inclusive. I do not believe there is any way better to do this than education. A well-rounded education, sorry, a well-rounded education, an informative education, as a BVSD graduate, I unfortunately did not see. As a first-generation immigrant and a person with very strong ties to the LGBT community, I unfortunately did not see in my time attending its schools, nor did I see the all-inclusive and anti-racism environment. Everybody seems to be concerned. And unfortunately, it isn't even something teachers and parents can claim to understand because my own mother didn't. All we are asking for is choice, a freedom to choose, to raise and educate the children in our lives the way we best see fit as guardians. And I feel the most biased way to go about this is to say I am free to choose, but only from the choices provided to me as a minority. Please vote yes.
Theron Garfield, followed by Kim Strong.
Thank you. My name is actually Theron Crawford. I'm sorry for the bad penmanship. I'm going to read the email that I sent you guys. I only got one response, but I want to make sure that's kind of emphasized. Again, my name is Theron Crawford. I'm a single father of a son who will soon go into preschool. I was emailing you in regards to the upcoming vote for today's decision on the Ascent School here in BVSD. Currently, my plan is to homeschool my son as I work in BVSD and live here. And quite frankly, the behavior of the board during the last meeting makes me believe this will be my only option. I hope that the mass amount of emails from parents who support this school will persuade you to move your vote from a no to a yes. Unfortunately, the decision from the board appears to be 100% politically motivated in an attempt to thought-police our right as parents to determine the education for our children. I believe the rhetoric of not enough diversity is a complete dogmatic fallacy based on all Caucasian board. How hypocritical can BVSD be to tell a room with several minorities that they believe that the school wouldn't have enough diversity? Monarch, Centaurus, Fairview, and even Boulder don't have this large ethnic diversity. Yet they continue to receive funding. P2P also is mostly homogenous school population with similar demographics. I believe that most people observing can see through this nonsense. The definition of diversity is variety. That means the variety in everything, religion, morals, race, and political ideology. Telling me, an African-American, that you won't open the school because you want to be more inclusive than any of y'all's dinner table will ever be is astronomically more racist than a white supremacist spitting in my face. Telling me essentially that I don't have the right to choose how my son and future child will be educated because of nonexistent lack of diversity is equal to racial segregation between Brown versus Board of Education, and that me, as a parent, is stopped from attempting to give my child the best education that's possible. This will be a punch in the face of all individuals who fought for civil rights, to all individuals who fought civil rights and the right to choose, including MLK, Ruby Rose, and Rosa Parks.
Kim Strong?
Hello, good evening to the board. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Dr. Anderson, I'd like to applaud your decision earlier to reconsider due to the dearth of information that was provided about this charter school. I'm here to urge you to vote no. I am a parent of a girl in BVSD, a daughter who's Latina, she's a person of color, she's a Spanish speaker. My family already faces discrimination, and that's why the discrimination waiver is so important to me. And maybe if you come from a family that doesn't face discrimination a lot, you don't care whether or not those protections are in place, but I care. Because already in our school, we are confronting, it's not a perfect world, and BVSD is making a lot of efforts to do better, but there's already problems. And if we put a curriculum in place and it gets a green light from the public, because these are public funds, that this is okay, that not everybody counts, not everybody has to be represented in the curriculum. I was looking over, I'm also not a part of any special interest group, I find that highly offensive, and if that's the kind of tolerance and diversity that these schools are supposed to promote, saying that anyone who disagrees from them comes from a moneyed interest or highly organized using fear, I'm just a parent. Like, I'm just a parent, and I know we all want what's best for our kids, and we all want choice, but there has to be balance. And if your choice means the choice to discriminate against my family or the choice to make my daughter feel invisible because she's not represented in the curriculum, so where's my choice to be represented in the curriculum? Where's my choice to feel honored and respected and to have her acknowledged? She's a proud Latina, she has indigenous roots, and this curriculum that says based on our heritage of Western and American ideals and literature and history, that's not her heritage, that's not her roots. So what's her place there? She doesn't have a place. She's going to be silent, she's going to be made invisible. Please, move forward, you're doing such a good job already. Don't put kids in places where they become invisible, that they're dehumanized. I'm also a doctoral student in educational research. I don't know why that's a bad thing, like, I trust doctors who go to school. None of the educational research supports this. Their proposal for addressing the white Latino gap is uniforms and grammar and spelling in Latin. There's absolutely no educational research that supports this. Please vote no.
Christine Zabala, followed by, oh, that's her.
Hi. My name is Christine Zabala, and I am currently a Boulder resident. I'm also a PhD student in education at CU Boulder, where I'm an educational researcher, and I'm a teacher committed to supporting my LGBTQ students. And as such, I urge the board to vote no on the application of Ascent Charter School. The policies of Barney Charter School Initiative, of which Ascent is a part, are code of language that are anti-bilingual ed, anti-LGBTQ, and anti-diversity. To believe that this conservative Christian body, which will provide professional development for the proposed charter school, will not have significant influence over Ascent is dangerously naive. There is no place for Christian policies in a publicly funded school. In September, this board voted not to review Ascent's application because of incomplete information, most alarmingly its request to waive BVSD's anti-discrimination policy. The policies advocated by this charter are blatantly dangerous for all students, specifically people of color, LGBTQ students, and English language learners. If the nondiscrimination policy does not apply to every school in the district, it sets a very clear message that the district does not take anti-discrimination seriously. I echo the superintendent and appreciate his change of heart on this matter, and I strongly believe that any school that rejects BVSD's anti-discrimination policy has no place in BVSD and that Ascent Charter School has no place in BVSD. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes public participation, so thank you for hanging in there, and thank you so much for being respectful so that we could all feel heard and respected regardless of where we're coming from. So our next item is, and I guess I'm going to consult with my board, do you want a break before board? Okay, so we are going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to the next item, which is board communication. Okay, we're going to come back to the meeting. All right, we're going to resume our meeting, and the next item on our agenda is board communication. So I'm actually going to start this evening. Again, thank you all for coming and sharing your voices and your thoughts about Ascent Classical Academy. It's really important as our community considers this application. The other piece is that Derek Schuler, who is the head of Ascent but does not live in Boulder Valley School District, had wanted to make some comments, and I offered to read them on his behalf during board comments so that he could have a voice in the room too. It's very important to us, even though he's not a resident of the district. And we couldn't figure out how to work that in the agenda last minute today. So he writes, "This week is National School Choice Week, so it's an interesting day to be voting on the future of our charter school. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities for its children. Your district goal number one is to partner with families and students to create meaningful and engaging opportunities for each child. BVSD Policy LBD states, 'The Board of Education believes that public school programs should be designed to fit the needs of individual students and that parents and educators have a right and responsibility to participate in the schools which serve them. The state of Colorado has recognized charter schools as one avenue for parents, teachers, and community members to provide for education of children within the public school system. You have heard from many people who both support and oppose our charter school application. Most opposing our application are basing their opposition on knowingly false information. We have provided you, the Board of Education, emails showing the community is being intentionally misled for an unknown purpose, but it's not to fight possible discrimination. Is this way of doing business the example we want to set for our children, especially when it's being done to deny them access to the programs they want? You have also heard from many families who are currently enrolled in our affiliated schools, they are diverse and have diverse needs. These families have told you their firsthand experiences and what is actually taking place in our schools. None of the claims you've heard about not serving all children are true. As you know, charter schools must follow the law and serve all children. We have provided you a policy on nondiscrimination and our commitment to serve all children in BVSD. We have provided you a written action plan on how we will reach out to underserved children and the community and work with BVSD to help close the achievement gap. We have provided information on the network structure we've adopted, pioneered by now-Governor Jared Polis when he established the New America Schools Network, as well as a parent engagement plan to ensure parents have a voice in their school. Will you, the BVSD Board of Education, similarly listen to the voices of the families of the over 625 students who desperately want a classical option in the community? Are proposed tuition-free K-12 classical charter schools something not offered in BVSD? The Charter School Act was approved on a bipartisan basis to offer students, parents, the exact opportunity we're proposing with this application. The classical school model is the highest performing in the state of Colorado, with five of the top 10 schools in the state using a classical or liberal arts approach. We are proposing a proven replication with an experienced and capable team behind it. Sister School Golden View Classical Academy has ranked 10th in the state in SAT scores in the first year for which it had eligible data. Classical education has a strong following with parents wanting our explicit phonics, low-technology environment, engaging classical literature in Latin in order to improve understanding of our own language, direct teacher-led instruction, a small-school culture with order and discipline, uniforms, and a focus on developing young people with good character and virtue. We have partnered with the Barney Charter School Initiative to help ensure we have a high-quality classical program. BVSD has sent us questions about the initiative, and we have worked with them to address those questions. Earlier today, I sent you a letter from the Initiative acknowledging their expectation that all their schools follow the law on discrimination and religious instruction. Clear language affirming this will be also added to our memorandum of understanding MOU. The DAC review recommended in an aisle citing they had remaining questions and simply didn't have enough time to complete their review. Since that review and the review by staff, BVSD has sent Ascent Classical a significant number of questions, including many on specific waivers. Our team has addressed all questions sent to us. We have responded to all the outstanding items in the DAC review and participated in two follow-up meetings with the Board of Education to discuss any remaining issues. It needs to be noted that the DAC review stated they didn't have enough time to work through their remaining questions. The Ascent Classical Academy team worked in faith to allow BVSD 65 days to complete the review process, more than double the amount of time allowed in the state Board of Education order. We have heard of a few comments about Ascent Classical Academy arming highly qualified and trained staff to protect and secure our children. This is unfounded and has never been mentioned in the charter application or conversations with BVSD beyond a hypothetical question. The school has never indicated an intent to do this in BVSD. Boulder Valley likes to promote its commitment to diversity and inclusion, allowing a new school model not offered in the district meets both of those commitments, along with the mission, goals, and policies of your board. Our families and 625 children appreciate you allowing the opportunity and access to a public education that meets their needs and expectations." I should have put a two-minute limit on that. So in any case, this was also sent to the Board of Education for your reference, and again, I just want to thank everyone for coming. This item is coming later in the agenda. So with that, I'd like to invite other board members to give comments. Kathy?
I know it feels a little strange to talk about something other than Ascent, but we did have other work to do. So as I said in my response to Superintendent Anderson's coming to coffee with the principal, I just want to, again, thank you for coming and thank Principal Stenshird for having the coffee with the principal. It's a very nice, open forum to find out what's going on in one of our high schools and for parents to feel listened to, and also a chance to just get to see some parents and others that you wouldn't get to see otherwise. I also went to the SEBAC meeting at UniHill, and the principal there, Lina Rodriguez, gave us a very nice tour of the school, and we kind of got to walk through with Rob and the contractors what the changes are going to be and where we're falling down because we don't have enough money to do what we'd really like to do there. But I also just want to, again, take the chance to applaud SEBAC because what I see when I go to those meetings is a group of engaged citizens who, you know, they have their pencils out, and they know what's balancing and what's not balancing, and they pay attention, and they're really trying to manage all of our public funds as well as they can. And I'm always really impressed, and I really appreciate the opportunity to go and listen to the SEBAC meetings. And I know we have some hard decisions coming up as to how we're going to use our remaining funds. I know tomorrow's a big day, we have our bond sales, we'll finally find out what our premium is and how much we might have to spend on a few other things. So it's an exciting time, and I just want to say thanks to Rob Price and all of his staff for all the great job that they do into the SEBAC committee. And then I just want to say thanks to Derek and Kim for letting us come and tour because we got to do that, and it was really interesting to go, and the little student ambassadors who would come up and shake your hand and tell you what they were doing was a nice touch. So I just want to say thank you for letting, having us come and take the time to tour the school. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Other board members? Kitty?
I want to thank everybody who came and spoke today. I want to thank everybody who emailed us. I have to admit, I have not read every single email yet because I ran out of time before I had to get here. But we do read our emails, and we do take our constituents' views seriously. I especially want to thank the two students who came to speak. That takes a lot of courage to get up and speak in front of a whole bunch of adults, and especially us sitting up here. So I'm glad they both spoke to us. And one thing I did today is I reached out to two organizations to clear up some misconceptions about the Ascent application. And one thing I told them is that they did present us with a nondiscrimination policy. It was not as robust as ours, but that I didn't believe they would exclude anybody from their school. And then the other piece was, even though they're affiliated with a Christian college, state law would not allow them to actually preach a religion. So I hope that message was well-received. I didn't hear anybody up here, well, never mind. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Okay. Richard?
I too want to thank everybody that came and spoke for and against Ascent Charter School. It's highly emotional, and I do appreciate all of the comments that were made. I also want to thank the two students that spoke up. I particularly want to I particularly want to thank the transgender child that came up. I think that takes a lot of courage to come and do that. Having a lesbian child myself, I can understand those particular issues very, very much. I made a comment when I went to go visit the charter school up in Golden, and mentioned that a charter school that had that type of pedagogy and methodology where kids wore uniforms, and it was more in terms of how they were teaching the grammar and English and stuff like that, was very similar to what many of the Latino countries use in terms of dictado. And I think it would, and when I said that, it would benefit some of the Latino students, that's what I was referring to. I was not referring so much to the classics and stuff like that, but the way they teach. Having said that, I also want to make sure that everybody in the crowd knows that I'm a very, very proud chicano mexicano, seven generations here in Colorado, so that I'm not confused with all of our white brothers and sisters here, okay?[679.11][679.11](Laughter). Just to make sure that you all know that. I also want to give Mike Grados, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, a big shout-out, because I was in a meeting with him today in Front Range Community College. And a couple of things that I heard today at that meeting is that there's a possibility that we may be able to do something in terms of increasing our bilingual teacher education pool by bringing par educators and working in partnership with Front Range Community College, et cetera. So I'm sure you're gonna hear more about that later, because I didn't hear it all today. But I just want to thank you, Mike, for inviting me to that meeting. I certainly appreciate it. So, we'll see what happens next. Thank you.
I want to thank you all as well for coming out, and everybody giving their pros and cons on the Ascent Academy. I've done, I've delved a lot into not only going out there to actually have a walkthrough and tour of Golden View, but also just looking up materials and research and reading their replacement policies. So, this is a hard decision, and the Board is going to take a lot of that into consideration. I can say that I did read every email, except for the ones that came in in the last few hours, because I was sitting here. And it was long and lengthy. And the only other thing I want to say before, because there'll be more discussion later, and I'll have a little more detail to give you. But, Richard, I'm still waiting for my 23-and-me results to come in any day now, and I think I'm a mixture of a whole lot of stuff. So, I told my husband I'm gonna be able to relate to everybody. Okay.
Okay. Shelley and Sam? Shelley?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for coming, no matter where you stand on the Ascent issue. And just say what an honor it is actually to be able to listen to all of you and to have the opportunity to deliberate on such an important issue that we have here tonight. I want you all to know that I'm taking all of your comments very seriously, and as of this point, I haven't completely made up my mind. So, thank you for all the information you shared today.
And Sam?
I would just echo my colleagues' thanks to all of you for taking your time this evening to speak with us, for those of you who have emailed us. Also, additional thanks to William and Jude, the two students who spoke. That does take courage, as one of my Board colleagues said. And thank you, Derek, for reaching out to me and for our conversation as well. We have one of those decisions where we have competing community values, and we'll do our best. But thank you, everybody, for your input. It does make a difference.
Okay. So that concludes board communication. So I had a request from some Board members to go into executive session at this time. So what I'm gonna do, the way this works, is I'm going to make a motion to go, or I'm gonna read some words. Someone can make a motion. Someone needs to second it, and then we're gonna discuss whether we're gonna go into executive session, and then Laura's gonna vote. Okay? And that's because someone has legal questions. So here we go. "I'd like to clarify in the record that the Board of Education has issues to discuss in executive session as follows: Legal matters, and to receive legal advice and the opinion of counsel on specific legal questions, including contracts, statute, and policy interpretations, and potential legal claims pursuant to CRS 2464024B," and that's it. Okay. So does anyone want to make a motion to go into executive? Okay. So Kitty, seconded by Shelley. All right. Is there any discussion or questions?
Executive session for what now?
So, a Board member would like to ask a legal question before we move forward with the agenda?
As it relates to?
To specific legal questions, including contracts, statute, and policy interpretations, and potential legal claims. Okay? All right. Any other questions, Board members? All right. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
No.
Gubhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So now what's gonna happen is we're gonna leave, and we're gonna go into Glacier, probably? Well, we don't have to tell, I mean, we're going somewhere. We have to find out, we have to find an open room. All right. And this isn't gonna be long. So, and then we're gonna come back. Is that, is that how it works, Melissa? Yep? Okay. Thanks for your patience. We're back and ready to continue with our agenda. The next item on our agenda is number seven, an information item 7.1, the Legislative Update. Any legislative issues Board members wanted to bring up? Kathy?
Last week, one of the first bills up in the Senate was the bill to address an issue that was found to be unconstitutional under single subject by a Denver District Court about transporting children across district lines to address the issues of supporting, they call it, mobile students, but mostly that's homeless students and foster care students. And it was really just to clean up what this, the District Court had said was unconstitutional, and it passed out of the Senate Education Committee on a party-line vote. And I was there to listen to that. And as I understand it, there's also going to be some conversation about whether there's a referred measure on debruising, debruising the state, so that we're able to keep the Tabor surplus when there is a surplus, and with a certain listing of areas that the money would be spent on, and K-12 would obviously be one of those. And then, I thought we were going to bring to the Board, but I think it got lost, whether we had a request whether we were gonna support the Governor's proposal. Remember, we got that, and we were gonna have a discussion about that. I don't know that there's any urgency to that. Maybe we just bring that back at a time when we don't have so much on our agenda. So I think, given the late hour and the other pressing issues, I think we can move on the legislative agenda and maybe calendar a little more time for the next Board meeting, if that makes sense, Madam Chair.
Yeah. And I just want to confirm that everybody got the newsletter from our, from Ernstine, from Policy Matters, with the weekly update? Everyone's receiving it? Okay, great. Because that always has some good information in it. All right. So, we'll go on to our next item. And our next item is Action Items Consent Grouping. The first is 8.1 Personnel Items. 8.2 Approval of Minutes, January 8, 2019, Special Meeting. 8.3 Approval of Minutes, January 8, 2019, Regular Meeting. 8.4 Approval of Minutes, January 15, 2019, Special Meeting. 8.5, 2018-19 Revised Budget. 8.6 Amendment to the Construction Manager/General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at the Netherlands Bus Facility. 8.7 Approval of Contract for Natural Gas Utility. 8.8 Approval of Purchase Math Consumable Instructionable, excuse me, Instructional Materials Fall. 8.9 Fiber Agreement with City of Louisville. Do I have, are there any items any members would like to pull? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? And seconded by Donna? Thank you. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Yes.
Gubhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we're moving on to number nine, our action items. 9.1 Board to Take Action on the Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons Charter School Application. Rob, do you want to do any setting up on this? Okay. All right. So to start the discussion, does anyone want to make a motion?
I have a question for you.
Yes, go ahead.
We have two separate resolutions in front of us. Are we gonna be voting on, well, obviously, if we vote on one, we wouldn't vote on the other. But is there a particular order they're in?
You know what? So this is a great question, and because all of you did not get two things put in front of you. So we have prepared for us two starting points, because these resolutions tend to be long. And we have three options tonight. One is a, just a clean approval of the Ascent application, which wouldn't really require much of a resolution, so there would be no conditions. So we actually didn't prepare that. The second is a conditional approval of Ascent, and that was something that, and one of the things is, if you looked at the resolution in the Board Packet Materials with the first recommendation by the superintendent, it's not written in the format of a resolution. So what Melissa did, so that we could vote on a resolution, is put it in the format that you would see in a resolution. And then she prepared a second resolution to address the change in attitude toward the application, which would be a denial of Ascent Classical Academy Flatiron Charter Application. We will most likely amend these through discussion, whichever one we decide to go with. So that's how, that'll work. But we really need a starting place, because these are somewhat lengthy. And I'm being a little lengthy, so my apologies.
So another question. So we need a motion to approve one or the other of these to start out?
Yeah, as a starting point.
Okay.
Right. And then we discuss and decide and go through that process.
Do you want us to read the whole thing, or just move one or the other?
You know, I think you should probably read the whole thing. What do you all say?
You mean aloud?
I, it's very long, but, but it's a public, it's a public meeting. We should get it out there. And it's Donna. We could put it on Board Docs. Well, we'll see. It's a working document. It's a tough, it's a tough one. Okay. Anyone?
I'll go. I move that we deny the Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons Charter Application, and I guess since I said that, I get to read it?
Do we second first, or do you?
There needs to be a second.
I second.
Then I'll read it, and then there'll be discussion, right? Whereas pursuant to CRS 22-30.5-504, the Board of Education of Boulder Valley School District RE2 is a local Board of Education with exclusive chartering authority to authorize charter schools within its geographic boundaries in accordance with the Colorado Charter Schools Act CRS 22-30.5-101 to 120. And whereas on August 1, 2018, Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons submitted a timely application with the school district, seeking authorization to open a public charter school serving grades kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas the application was presented to the District Accountability Committee, and the DAC reviewed the application and provided a report to the Board on January 4, 2019, in writing, and January 8, 2019, during the Board's special meeting, recommending denial of the charter application, citing concerns in the areas of governance and capacity, facility, enrollment, equity, and waivers. Whereas school district staff members reviewed the application and provided a report to the Board, along with Superintendent recommendations on January 7, 2019, in writing, and January 8, 2019, during the Board's special meeting. And whereas a public hearing on the application was held by the Board on January 8, 2019, along with opportunities for public participation at each regular meeting of the Board between August 1, 2018, and January 22, 2019. And whereas the Board submitted questions to ACAF in writing and also in person during a special meeting held on January 15, 2019, and ACAF provided written responses as well as participated in the dialogue at the special meeting. And whereas the Board has considered all the materials and information submitted by ACAF, the requirements of the Charter Schools Act, Board Policy LBD, and Regulation LBD-R, and the best interests of the school district, its students, and the community. And whereas the Board finds that the denial of the ACAF application for the reasons stated in this resolution is consistent with the best interests of the school district, its students, and the community. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Boulder Valley School District that the charter application of Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons to operate a kindergarten through 12th grade school is denied for the following reasons. Number one, public accountability and transparency. A, lack of opportunity for parent involvement. Per BVSD Policy LBD, quote, "The Board of Education believes that parents and educators have a right and responsibility to participate in the schools which serve them," end of quote. BVSD Regulation LBD-R, Section 8, Period D, requires the applicant to describe expectations and plans for ongoing parent and community involvement. Subparagraph I, only one of seven ACAF Steering Committee members intends to be a future parent of ACAF. The original ACAF application states that Steering Committee members will transition to the governing board upon approval of the charter application. It is unclear if the initial ACAF board of five directors will include any parents, and how the initial board will be selected. Going forward, ACAF board members are selected by existing board members, not by an election process opened to school community. It is unclear how the board members will represent the interests and diversity of the school, its families, its staff, and the BVSD community in which the school is located, and will bring a diversity of skill sets to the governance of the school. This board structure is inconsistent with how the majority of charter schools, including BVSD charter schools, are governed. Number two, there is no established mechanism for feedback and dialogue between the school Accountability Committee and the ACAF board, or description of how the ACAF board will be responsive to feedback and concerns from the school Accountability Committee. Number three, ACAF asserts the legally suspect position that grievances or discussions involving specific personnel will not be entertained during ACAF board meeting, further limiting accountability of the ACAF board. AC, number four, ACAF failed to adequately address several governance issues, which is particularly concerning, given that ACAF is supported by a charter management organization, per Ascent Classical Academies, or ACA, closed per en. For example, ACAF is not committed to holding all ACAF board meetings within the boundaries of BVSD. The Board of the other school in Ascent Classical Academy's network, Ascent Classical Academy of Douglas County, meets in Golden, Colorado, though the school is located 45 miles away in Castle Rock, Colorado. Further, the other schools affiliated with the charter management organization fail to comply with the letter and spirit of open meetings law, failing, one, to identify board members by full name, relationship to the school, and skills pertaining to charter school operations; two, to post adequate notices of meetings with agendas and supporting materials; and three, to post minutes of meetings and action items, per en, resolutions, policy statements, et cetera, closed per en, within a reasonable time. B, charter management provider in conflicts of interest. Ascent Classical Academies, the proposed charter management organization, has a service agreement with one school, per en, Douglas County, closed per en, with no performance data, so it is unknown whether the school management services provided by ACA will be a value-added benefit to ACAF. Number one, the applicant states its concern with ACA's ability to provide its highest level of support if it has to deal with BVSD instead of the Charter School Institute, leading to the larger concern with whether the ACAF board will be in a position to hold the ACA accountable to provide its highest level of support, and to collaborate and cooperate with BVSD in good faith for the benefit of ACAF students. Number two, CRS 22-30.5-104, per en, fore, closed per en, per en B, closed per en, provides that a charter school may contract with an education management provider, quote, "so long as the charter school maintains a governing board that is independent of the education management provider," unquote. There is significant concern whether ACAF's board will be able to maintain autonomy, governing authority, and control over its academic program, curriculum, budget, and staffing, while purchasing services from ACA. staffing, while purchasing services from ACA via the proposed school management contract and its stated connection slash commitment to Hillsdale College. Number three, it is questionable whether the charter applicant, ACA-F, truly is negotiating at arms-length with ACA, given that two employees of ACA, Derek Schuler and Kim Gilmarten, are on the steering committee for ACA-F. The application states that Ascent Classical Academy Flatirons, ACA-F board, chose to partner with Ascent Classical Academies, ACA, because the organization provides a comprehensive educational program that includes curriculum, professional development, staffing, and more, plus a school facility. Yet, the ACA-F board has not been identified in the application, and is to be formed aft, is to be formed after approval of the application. Paren, elsewhere in the application, it states, "The steering committee will transition to the governing board of the school," close paren. Instead, the steering committee, members of which have an actual conflict of interest with respect to ACA, has been held out as the body preparing the application and establishing the details of the relationship with ACA. Number four, further, Derek Schuler, the CEO of ACA, and the lead member of the ACA-F steering committee, paren, to date handling all communications with BVSD, close paren, is the current chair of the governing board for Golden Blue, Golden View Classical Academy, paren, as of the last publicly posted minutes of GVCA, a special meeting on October 9th, 2018, to expel a student. The application states that GVCA will be entering into a service agreement with ACA. Thus, it seems that arms-length dealings between ACA and its related charter schools are not applicable in practice, given the chair of GVCA's board is also the CEO of ACA and affiliated with both parties to the impending service agreement. This relationship raises concerns about potential conflicts inherent in the ACA-F context. In particular, it seems unlikely the ACA-F board will be autonomous and accountable to ACA-F families and its authorizing school district. Five, there is a stated expectation in the proposed contract between ACA-F and ACA that ACA-F will cooperate with ACA and exercise good faith in considering the recommendations of ACA, rather than ACA providing services at the request and direction of the ACA-F governing board. The contract between ACA-F and ACA has no established term, but instead is perpetual, nor does the contract have an established mechanism for the ACA-F board to annually evaluate the performance of ACA. Another area of concern is the contract term providing that ACA will be the direct employer of all the staff working at the school, including the school's principal. This arrangement creates inherent conflicts of interest and other concerns with respect to duties of loyalty and the operation of the school for the benefit of the students and community. This arrangement obviously will interfere with the ACA-F governing board's ability to effectively evaluate the services provided by ACA. Overall, the proposed contractual relationship between ACA-F and ACA raises significant concern as to how ACA will be held accountable to ACA-F's governing board and ACA-F's school district authorizer. Number two, lack of achievement and support for the educational needs of all students. Per BVSD Policy LBD, quote, "The Board of Education believes that public school programs should be designed to fit the needs of individual students," unquote. Further, LBD specifically encourages charter applicants to develop an educational program to serve the needs of students considered academically at risk. ACA-F has failed to demonstrate a commitment or ability to ensure access and opportunity to learn for a diverse population of students. A, ACA-F failed to describe how it will recruit a diverse student population, paren, including diversity with respect to race, disability, socioeconomic background, language, emerging bilinguals, gender identity, et cetera, that closely matches the diversity of BVSD overall. B, ACA-F failed to describe how it will ensure that all legal requirements for identification of students with specialized needs are followed. C, ACA-F failed to describe how planned professional development will provide teachers with tools necessary to address the educational needs of students, the educational needs of a diverse population, since all professional development appears to come solely from Hillsdale College. D, ACA-F failed to reflect an adequate understanding of federal laws addressing students with disabilities, paren, IDEA, and Section 504, close paren, and failed to describe how it will provide a continuum of special education services for all types of students with individualized education plans, including an adequate budget for these costs. For example, there is no information as to how ACA-F will address a vast array of disabilities and needs, such as twice-exceptional students, students with autism, and students who are medically fragile, SED programming, ILC programming, and autism programming. E, the only known ACA-affiliated school, paren, Golden View Classical Academy, close paren, failed to meet state standards for growth and achievement, whereas BVSD surpassed state standards in both, while serving a much larger percentage of students with special education IEPs and students eligible for free and reduced-price meals. F, ACA-F stated that it will not adjust curriculum in the first three years as the academic program is implemented, which indicates a planned lack of responsiveness should data indicate that student learning is not on track to meet the school's stated goals. G, the stated compensation for faculty is well below market and creates a question about the school's ability to recruit and hire staff with the training and experience to support a diverse population of students. Number three, policies. ACA-F seeks to waive out of many BVSD policies, but is silent with respect to how each BVSD policy through which the school is seeking a waiver is, in its present form, so counter to the school's operation that a waiver is needed. The stated replacement plans are nonexistent or insufficient to warrant a waiver in most instances. A, of particular concern is ACA-F's desire to waive BVSD's non-discrimination policy. Though ACA-F acknowledges a legal obligation not to discriminate, it fails to offer any explanation for how it intends to comply with the aspects of the policy, paren, and related BVSD regulations and exhibits, close paren, that are not legally required but have been enacted to meet the needs of the BVSD community, including non-discrimination based on physical characteristics and gender identity and expression. None of the five other BVSD charter schools have sought a waiver of this policy. B, though ACA-F states a commitment to comply with the Colorado Open Meetings Act and mentions in passing the topics addressed in these policies, it nonetheless seeks a waiver from the below BVSD policies without explaining how the school will carry out the intent of the policies. Number one, BC, which is school board member conduct. Number two, BCB, school board member conflict of interest. Number three, BE, school board meetings. Number four, BEC, executive sessions. Number five, BEDA, notification of school board meetings. Number six, BEDF, voting method. And number seven, BG, school board policy process. C, it is unclear why ACA-F seeks to waive the policy relating to expectations for ethical staff conduct, GBEA, which is the policy for staff ethics and conflicts of interest. D, it is unclear how ACA-F intends to meet the intent of the below policies that relate to the BVSD community's values as adopted by the BVSD board. Number one, IGAC, which is teaching about religion and religion in schools. Number two, IGAE, health education. Number three, IGAG, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Four, IGAI, human sexuality. Five, IIAC, library media center learning material selection. Six, IJ, instructional material selection and adoption. Seven, IKF, 2017 to 2020, and IKF 2021, graduation requirements. Seven, INB, teaching about controversial issues. Number nine, JB, equal educational opportunities and JBB sexual harassment. Ten, KE, public complaints, and KEC, public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials or strategies. Number four. Lack of parent, I know, hang in there. Lack of parent and community involvement and support. The Charter Schools Act was written to give parents more control in school choice. The application does not mention any involvement by parents with respect to the preparation of this application and the development of the school. It appears that a relatively small number of the referenced expressions of interest slash letters of intent to enroll are from families within the school district. The application does not provide detail with respect to the nature, purpose, terms, and scope of service of any partnerships within the school district, or that such partners have committed to the school. There is no clear information about how the school will communicate with families, include them in decision-making processes, or engage their input beyond an annual survey. Five, concerns about the willingness of ACA-F to collaborate with the district for the best interests of students. BVSD Regulation LBD dash R, Section 8.1, provides that the charter applicant should describe the relationship between the district charter school and the school district. ACA-F's original application was silent on this topic. After the school district pointed out this deficiency, ACA-F offered this summary statement, quote, "The governing board is legally independent, and the relationship between the school district and charter school is agreed to in the charter contract," end of quote. A, throughout the charter application review process, though ACA-F willingly provided additional information about its school, ACA-F indicated no willingness to bend or compromise to address the school district's concerns about ACA-F's lack of public accountability and transparency, its governance model, its relationship with its charter management organization, its approach to meeting the needs of all students, its requested waivers of policy, and its level of involvement of parents and the community. It is abundantly clear that ACA-F intends for its relationship with BVSD to be nothing beyond its contractual obligations. B, ACA-F's description in its application of the proposed dispute resolution process does not meet the intent of BVSD Regulation LBD dash R, requiring a charter applicant to, quote, "describe the process consistent with state law," underlined, "that will be used to resolve disputes that may arise between the district and the district charter school," end of quote. ACA-F references the correct statutory section, paren, CRS 22 dash thirty point five oh one to one oh seven point five, but ACA-F references the correct statutory, sorry, but significantly veers from the statutory language that encourages the parties to agree to be bound by the written findings resulting from an agreed-upon neutral third party, with such findings being final and not subject to appeal, again, underscored. Instead, Ascent seeks to have a right to appeal to the state board even after agreeing to be bound by the mutually agreed-upon neutral third party. This position is internally inconsistent and completely undermines the intent of the statutory provision, which is designed to urge charters and authorizers to actively engage in alternate dispute resolution to resolve their dispute outside the context of the state board and the courts. C, ACA-F's interest in being authorized through CSI instead of the school district has been repeated numerous times throughout this process. It is widely known that both Douglas County School District and Jefferson County School District decided to release ACA's affiliated schools to CSI after an extended lack of collaboration on the part of ACA with local authorizers. D, in BVSD's experience in the context of its longstanding relationship with its five existing charter schools, a cooperative and dynamic working relationship between district staff and the charter schools beyond the terms of the charter contract is mutually beneficial for the students, as student transfer between district-run schools and charters, as health and safety and security incidents and issues arise, and as district and charter staff implement the charter contract on a day-by-day basis.
Okay, so that's a lot of information about education in Colorado, lots of statutes. Okay, so we had a motion by Kathy that was seconded by Kitty, so now we're going to have discussion about this motion, and this is a time to, you can amend the motion, we can vote no on the motion, and then create another motion, so that's what we're doing next. So who would like to start with comments about this motion? Or questions? You want to go first? I don't think there's a particular order, but.
I, I just have one correction.
Yeah.
And it's on five. C, because Douglas County, I don't believe, has released the school to CSI, so I think that's just an inaccurate statement in our resolution, and I think would need to be amended.
So did everyone get that?
Do we need a second for that, or do we want to, how do we want to proceed with this?
How should we proceed? Should that be a motion, or should we?
Well, there will need to be a motion to amend.
Okay.
So how you want to do that, collect them?
Okay, maybe I'm going to make, I'm going to make a list, and because before we invest too much time in this, in case we're not going to go this direction. Okay? And that was, um.
That was five C.
Five C. Five C, Douglas County has not yet released Ascent to CSI. But the request has been made? But the request has been made. Okay.
That's my understanding of the current status.
Okay, I had a couple comments. I thought that on in B, three B under policies, I felt like a couple of these were addressed in the board member handbook, in the appendix section of the charter school application. And I, I particularly remember the school board member conflict of interest and conduct.
Excuse me, Tina?
Yeah.
When we talk about what section it is, since they don't have this in front of them, can we say exactly what the topic of the section is?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty. So, I'll start again. Under the policy section, where we look at the, the topics in the policies that are described below, which is, and ACA-F has sought a waiver of these policies, there are a couple here that I feel were addressed, not in policies per se, but in the board member handbook, and those particularly were the school board member conduct, the school board member conflict of interest. I, I think most of this was covered, and so I would ask Melissa, what is the, but I mean, I understand it's not, as, they're not written as policies, they're in a handbook, so what's the?
Yeah, the legal difference?
Yeah, what, could you tell me why we would call this out in this way?
I mean, I'm, I'm afraid that this would be the board's discussion around this topic.
Okay.
I know there's been a lot of back and forth on this topic, and it's.
Right. Okay, so, well, the board will take up this discussion. Okay, so I, I mean, this has been a difficult area, because there aren't specific policies with the Flatirons Group, they, it's mostly just handbooks, so it's hard to do apples to apples, it doesn't mean that the content isn't there. Comment?
Well, that was my question, is, because my understanding is that school policies have the force of law, and a handbook does not. So whereas there's intention expressed in the handbook, then it seems to be lack of express, you know, expressly written in policy.
Okay. Did someone else have a comment?
I have some comments, but on this specific issue?
On this specific issue.
On the whole thing, yeah.
But we're just on this issue for right now.
Just on the Bs, but then do you want to go?
No, I, I'm going to say it all in one.
Awesome, okay. So that would be a, one issue I'd like to explore a little bit more, just to make sure that that's reflective of the materials that we were given.
I just don't understand why when there's been a lot of conversation around, our concern around policies, why, if it is in the handbook, why they didn't just include it as a policy? It just seems like it continues to show a lack of collaboration with us, and we've seen other examples in this, as we identified and hear of, their not strict compliance with Colorado Open Meeting.
with Colorado Open Meetings Act, and I think this just continues that problem, so.
Okay. Donna?
Well, they did submit to us a document that said, here's the policy we adopted last night, and I'll read directly, and the quote is, "That ACA-F is committed to providing a safe learning and work environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. The school is subject to all federal and state laws and constitutional provisions prohibiting discrimination on the basis of any legally protected status, including disability, race, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, religion, ancestry, or need for special education services." They sent that to us. That was the policy they adopted that night. So I read that as a policy. There's been, there's a lot more on this whole document that I disagree with, that I think they spent a lot of time communicating with us. Their parents have communicated with us, and parents in our district have communicated with us on so many things here that I don't think hold water in what we're saying. I think the religious part, while I have great empathy for the spirit of this concern, I also believe we need to be really careful here. We don't want to set a precedent that might cause us to reject the school where members are connected to Buddhist, Jewish, or Islamic faith backgrounds. Connection to a faith is not the same as promoting that faith or evangelizing in violation of our laws and common culture. What I saw when I visited their school was a place that is committed to diversity of views and separation of church and state. Their library contains books from many faith backgrounds. Our own district policy states, the district supports, our district, supports the inclusion of religious literature, music, drama, and the arts in the curriculum and in school activities, provided it is intrinsic to the learning experience in the various fields of study and is presented objectively. There's a lot more that I could go on with this resolution that I have problems with, and I think that a lot of the things that are of question here can be addressed in a contract with the school. I think it can be addressed in the negotiations. I'm surprised that, I saw the letter from Jared Polis that commends the school. I can't imagine that Jared Polis, our governor, would commend a school that he hasn't looked into, not only their governance, but their academic structure. That's all I have to say.
I just want to be clear, Donna, that there's nothing in this resolution that addresses anything about religion. These are all stated policies that are statutory or in our policy. There, we heard a lot, I know in the social media and tonight about that, but that's not what this resolution addresses at all.
Kitty?
Yeah, and I think also, it, I, well, the preface to say, I went and had a tour. The school was very impressive. The students were impressive. I got a very positive feeling there. And I was, I, one of the questions I had, and Mr. Schuler answered, I was concerned about their sex education policy, and he assured me that it was not abstinence only, and that they understand that abstinence only leads to higher teen pregnancy rates. And at the time, I told him, that's great, I'm really glad to hear it, and I'm going to ask you to put it in writing. And I did submit to that and did not get it back in writing. What concerns me is that we are being told a lot of things by parents, by staff, by other people. But what we're told, I don't think we should use in making a decision. I think we need to consider what is put in writing. I mean, I agree with Donna, they did give us a nondiscrimination, a policy. It is not even nearly as robust as ours, and that concerns me, because it sounds like they don't have the willingness to be as robust as we want it to be. So that's what I wanted to say, is that it's important to look at what they submitted to us, not what parents have said, or what they have said. I mean, we've heard from a ton of parents who absolutely love Golden View and Douglas County, and I believe them. And I believe that their students are, you know, happy as clams and doing really well, and I believe what they say when they say their special ed kids have gotten a great education. I'm not contesting any of that, but I, I think we need to focus on the policies, the written application, not what people are telling us.
Okay. Other board members? Shelley?
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time thinking through what I thought was a fair recommendation that the staff recommended to approve ascent with some fairly stringent conditions, and the reversal of that recommendation now is something I'm willing to consider for the right reasons, but I'm not sure I really understand how anything has changed from the point where we approved with conditions to now where we're recommending denying them. It seems like everything listed in this document is something we would have known before we recommended approval with conditions, so I don't understand fully the shift. And I just say that, you know, Kitty, you can say that we're not really considering what, everything we've read, you know, for the last week, literally hundreds of emails, and Kathy, you can say that we're not addressing that in this document, but we are talking about BVSD's nondiscrimination policy in here, which is at the heart of the social media attack on this school. And so I think it's important just to point out that the main concerns out there are that ascent's going to discriminate against the LGBTQ community and minority communities, that they're going to violate separation of church and state and be exclusively teaching Christianity at the school, and that they're going to arm teachers. I would say those are probably the three big concerns that we've heard in social media and from, and from all the letters that we've received. So I just want to address those one by one. People seem to have arrived at this first concern that they're going to discriminate against LGBTQ communities because they asked for a waiver of our anti-discrimination policy. And so that leads people to think that they intend to discriminate, right? That's the implication there. And of course, if that were true, we would all be legitimately concerned about that. There's no question about that. But my understanding is the reason they waived that policy was because it included complaint procedures that involved going through district, you know, levels through the complaints. So it doesn't make any sense for a charter school to put that sort of thing in their policy. So what I read in their policy, which, which Donna just read, was a very similar policy to our own. There's only a few words that are actually different. So I just, I don't think that their replacement policy lacks in anything. I think it reads like, much like our own, and just takes out the stuff that's not applicable to charter schools. So I don't think anyone out there should be under the impression that ascent doesn't have an appropriate anti-discrimination policy. It's pretty standard, actually. BVSD has added a few things over the years, and I have been on the board, and I have recommended some of those changes. So I know we didn't start out with that policy either. It has evolved, and I would expect ascent to evolve in the same way if they felt like it was inadequate somehow. So, and as far as the violation of laws governing separation of church and state, it's just, just to clarify, ascent's going to be a public school, so they have to follow the laws about religious instruction. And in fact, they've already adopted the essential components of our policy on that. So that's one that is really not of any sort of legitimate concern. And then the business about arming teachers. It's true that Golden View has decided to do that, and you said earlier that Doug Co. is doing that as well, but I out and out ask, do you have any intent to pursue this? And the answer I got back was no. We're aware of BVSD's sensitivities, this is not in the application, we have no intent to pursue this in BVSD. So I just want to set the record straight on the three probably main things that have come before this board in the last week about people's concerns about ascent. So, and then I'd just like to talk about the fact that, you know, most of the letters that we got from parents whose children actually attend one of these schools has been nothing but positive. I don't think we've had one letter where anybody said their kid was discriminated against, they weren't helped, their learning disabilities weren't better as a result of the education they got there. Literally in hundreds of letters, we have not heard that from one person. So I think that that's important to acknowledge, that there's not some, you know, specter here of kids getting a bad education or being treated unfairly at the school. And furthermore, they've also agreed to running a weighted lottery for FRL students, which was something that was really important to us. They're in conversation with minority groups about how to increase awareness of their program, and Richard, I think that you were behind that, you know, giving them some ideas, and they've taken those ideas seriously. And literally, they have hundreds of families, both within BVSD and outside of BVSD, that are interested in going to the school. So, and the reason they want to go is, you know, they've said it over and over, they like the classical curriculum, they like the low-tech environment, they like there's no cell phones, they like the direct instruction, they like the phonics, especially the parents with dyslexic kids, they like the Latin, they like the character education. And many of those parents, even though we heard a lot, from a lot of them tonight, many of them stayed home because they were so afraid of what they read on social media about them being called racist and homophobic, and they were afraid to come here and talk to us. So I just want to just say that this whole thing has gotten completely out of hand, and most of what was said out there and written to us is just nonsense. And so I don't, I don't think we should even be considering any of that when we're discussing this tonight. So having said that, do I believe that the ascent application should be approved? Well, I can tell you, I'm not worried they're going to discriminate, I'm not worried they're going to teach Christianity exclusively, and I'm not worried they're going to arm teachers. So am I worried about anything? Well, I'm a little worried about the potential conflicts of interest between, that could exist between ACA and ACA-F. And I'm worried about the governing board including, or not including, a significant number of parents. And I'm a little worried about financial transparency. I'd like to know more about the money that's being paid to ACA for purchased professional services. I'd like to understand that better. But I feel like all of those worries were addressed in the conditions that staff attached to their recommended, recommendation for approval the first time. I feel like we were starting to get to the heart of some of those, and that ascent has really, in some ways, stepped up to address some of those concerns, and now, I was actually encouraged by their response to our concerns until today, I heard staff's recommendation to deny. And so...
It was Dr. Anderson's recommendation, not staff?
Well, he is staff.
Right.
So I, so even though I have concerns, like I said, I believe that the original recommendation was solid, and that they identified, staff identified, the legitimate concerns that many of us have, and that if we had, if we approved this application with those conditions, I feel like we have an opportunity to work those out, and that ascent has showed in good faith in trying to do that. So I just, and I'm also concerned that this all happened so quickly, this recommendation to deny, that I don't know why we wouldn't just approve with conditions at this point, see if we can work it out, and if we can't work it out, then say, no, go. We still have the ability to do that, and that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Donna?
Just a quick comment from reading this, and I, as Kathy, she's, it's like reading War and Peace, but as she read it, my heart went out to her, I, it's a lot of reading. But there was deja vu that so much of this is exactly some of the DAC concerns. And when we, we got those concerns, many of us wrote numerous questions to the ACA-F people and asked them to answer the questions, and they answered them in detail, and then even more questions came out. And I think they've shown their willingness to work with us in that way.
And I'll just point a couple places where I'm not in, as in much alignment. And the first is on the anti-discrimination policy. From the perspective of our, of our community, I think that the inclusion of gender and gender expression and physical characteristics is critical. And I think that ascent has been clear that they're not going to put those words into their discrimination policy. And this is where things get really tricky with local control. And the assumption I'm making is that they had a board meeting about their anti-discrimination policy prior to meeting with us and took the words out. And so I'm just trying to understand why they didn't leave the words in, so that it could be reflective of what our community's worked so hard to have in our policy. And I think it's, it's different than sexual orientation, and it has, it's a unique element that needs to be reflected. And then also on the guns, that has been really tricky, because when we were in a work session, I heard Principal Gero say that they would consider arming teachers at Flatirons. Now we heard today that they would never consider that, and I, that's just been, the information has been moving. It doesn't, I'm not saying someone's wrong or right, but it's hard to get a pulse on what's really going to happen. The resolution for security was already passed by the Douglas County Board and the GVCA, which is fine, it doesn't mean that the ACA-F Board would pass the same resolution to arm teachers. But it's, it's hard to separate it when it's, it's just become very difficult to find out what's really going to happen with this school. And that kind of gets to Kitty's point of what's in writing and what are we being told? So I guess, does an email from Derek today saying that he's not going to arm teachers suffice? I don't know, and I don't know what we could have asked for if we had more time. But that's, I, it's just, I don't even know how to answer those questions, and what, what could we do in a contract negotiation to make sure that that's something that has to come back to the Boulder Valley School District? So, and I have a lot of concerns primarily about the governance structure. They, you know, thirty-five percent of our mill, of our funding comes from local taxpayers. And these are taxes, bonds, mills, that we've voted on because of the values we have and because of the direct transparent governance of a locally elected board, that's me. And it gets tricky when, when the legislator with HB 1375 two years ago required that boards share mill levies equally, it made it so that it made the local piece on the charter schools even tighter. And I actually opposed that bill, not because I don't believe in sharing revenue with charter schools, but I didn't think it should come from the legislature. I thought it should come from the local district with the locally elected boards and the local community that raises that money, and it's a lot of money in Boulder Valley School District. So it's almost, it's difficult when there are things here that I think that my local community, had they known that I was okay with some schools not having the gender words in their policy, or that some schools wouldn't have Boulder elected boards by parents, I'm not so sure those mill levies would have passed, and I don't know if I would have been elected. So it gets kind of, it does get a little bit political in that way, because I need to represent my community and what they voted for. I also do support charter schools in choice, and this is where it gets pretty complicated. So in this case, and it's very hard when you can't get a really good handle of what the policies are going to look like before contract negotiation. So it's put me in a, in a tough spot on this application. So I'm, and I, so, and I, but I feel for the parents who are looking for other opportunities, and I appreciated Rob's comment, that this doesn't mean it's the end of a conversation. It's time to reach out and see what we can do for parents who aren't, that are looking for more choice in our district. You know, we do have nine choice schools, five charter schools, a lottery system that thirty percent of our students choose other schools in, and we have a lot of different varieties. And it's possible we do need another varietal, but I'm very uncertain about the management and governance structure with this particular organization. I was also, I'm also really disappointed with the way that meeting minutes are posted. They are batched in six-month increments, they're not posted within thirty, sixty, or ninety days. That's tricky. I also have some, and this is going to be a little political, but it looks like a recalled Jefferson County Board Member was appointed to the GVCA Board, and I feel that sometimes that felt a little divisive to me. It was hard, I just read the minutes from September twenty-ninth, the GVCA. I'm hearing a head no, so I guess those minutes are incorrect. Who knows? Okay, so I guess I'm wrong. So it's really hard to tell what's going on. The other thing is, proposed policies aren't attached to the agendas, which has been, I've struggled with that. So when there are policy discussions, the proposed policies aren't attached, I believe they're available at the... I believe they're available at the Golden View office to be picked up. And I didn't have the time to go there to look at what those agenda pockets, packets look like. But in any case, I, I'm rambling a little bit. This is, this has been all so much information in the last week, in the last two months. And I'm still listening and want to hear what other board members have to say.
Well, before we came into this meeting, we had a meeting with Dr. Anderson on our strategic plan. And one of our highest priorities in our strategic plan and in our mission, and I think in all of our reasons for serving on this board, is that Boulder Valley School District has a high achievement gap and a high opportunity gap. And our, one of our highest and most important priorities is how to close that. So I sent questions to Ascent, and I never got answers to them. And one of the questions, and I sent them twice, and I've never received any answer, not in writing, not at the public meeting, never, which is, how would opening up Ascent Classical in our school district help us with that mission? I believe that when you look at their schools, they are not serving at-risk students. They are not serving, Jefferson County has a higher percentage of at-risk and minority students in Boulder. And they are not serving anywhere close to a representative sample of those at-risk and minority students in that district. And they've had years to do it, and they haven't done it. And yet, they say they're going to do it in Boulder with no plan. And I don't believe we can open up a school that can't help us close our achievement gap and address the needs of our highest, our highest needs population when they have not demonstrated an ability to do that. So my, my concerns are around addressing the students in Boulder Valley School District, addressing the opportunity and achievement gaps, trying to make sure that what we do is, every single step of the way is meeting that need. And I haven't seen anything, even despite my questions about this, that would address those concerns.
Other board members? Do we want to hear from Sam or Richard?
I said earlier that I have a daughter, she's lesbian. And the anti-discrimination or the non-discrimination equal opportunity policy, I would really feel more comfortable if in fact, gender identity expression, sexual orientation would be emphasized in the non-discrimination equal opportunity policy. And I also did provide some advice, I guess if you will, in terms of reaching out to the Latino community when I met with Derek and-
Kim.
Kim. And they did take that seriously. And I believe that they have made some contacts with some of the Latino communities. But let me say this, that I've done that for a number of other schools and other charter schools. And when people say that they're going to do it and they try to do it, but yet they don't get it done. That's my concern. They don't get it done. And we have our own charter schools as examples of that, here in Boulder Valley, where we do provide, I have provided advice and stuff like that, they don't get it done. So my, my, and then also the, because I sat down with both Derek and Kim, and they, they did this diagram stuff on their whiteboard as it related to the governance structure. And that was still pretty unclear to me in terms of how the governance structure was going to work. And it's still unclear to me on how that would work. Because you do have ACA on the one hand, and then you have ACAF. And what I kept hearing is that ACAF will have all of the hiring responsibility, but now I'm hearing that ACA is going to have the hiring responsibility. So I'm not sure what's going on with that. So, and I too am a little bit concerned and confused in terms of all the give and take. And I do want to say that I do pay attention to the emails. I read all of the emails. And I read all of the emails from the LGBTQ community, as well as the emails from the parents that have kids at Ascent. I did see Ascent, they're doing good things. But I have to listen to all of the community, not just to the Ascent parents.
Sam, you want to weigh in yet?
Yeah, I'll be a yes vote on the superintendent's recommendation. And I, I don't doubt the sincerity of the parents and the staff of Golden View. Nor do I feel that in voting to support the superintendent's recommendation, I am denying parents an opportunity for classical education in the North Metro area. I think there, that Ascent is not, by no means at the end of the road on that. And nor are we as a district. I've heard Dr. Anderson's commitment to meeting with parents to see if there is a way to bring that model into our district. But I have enough concerns that have been articulated by my colleagues that I'm going to support the recommendation to deny at this time. Concerns about transparency, about the governing board, about conflicts of interest. On the non-discrimination policy, I think one of the people who spoke to us during public participation said, "The current policy that Ascent has on non-discrimination meets the law, but our district has gone beyond the law." And I was part of the board too, that added things into that. And I don't understand why those just can't be added now, rather than wait for them to evolve, because that's very important to our community. So I'm a little troubled by that as well.
Okay. Other comments, Kathy?
So I would want to, you're keeping track of amendments?
I will.
I would just want to amend one of the whereas clauses because I do not believe personally that they answered all of our questions. And I think it's, under the whereas, where the board submitted questions and ACAF provided written responses. I think we could say some written responses, but the way it reads right now, it implies that they responded to all our questions, and that simply isn't the case. We, as I said, I sent my questions twice and never once received an answer. And then one other thing to address, Shelley, why we wouldn't do an approval with conditions. We can't, they won't even agree to how we would negotiate disagreements. And if we can't even agree as to how we're going to, if we get into contract negotiations and we can't even agree that we're going to go to a third party and they're going to resolve this, how are we going to negotiate the more important to me, that's just as important, but to me, that says that they aren't willing to try to negotiate with us because they can't even say what's required in the statute as to how we resolve these disputes. So we would have no recourse. They want it to be one-sided and not bilateral. And that really bothers me, that we can't have even an agreement on how we're going to resolve our disputes going forward.
Donna?
I, I think we're putting more demands on them than we put on our other charter schools, that we're asking them to show what the minorities that they support or have within their group. And we have that problem within all of our charter schools, not, not just pointing out Ascent. And I also think that they've answered question after question. I don't know when you sent your questions in, Kathy, if it was in the last 30 minutes or, you know, hours before this started?
It's been 10 days.
I, I didn't know. But I know that every question that I sent in, and I even had a message from them, an email saying they could call us, we could call them anytime we wanted. So I felt that they have been very open and, "We'll answer any question that you want." And they put over 30 questions in writing, is one of my points I want to make.
Okay. Shelley?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to address a series of comments that have been made. First of all, Tina, I did not hear what you heard from the Golden View principal regarding arming teachers. I heard him say that the Golden View parents wanted it, the Golden View police were okay with it, that they went through some sort of extensive training program so that the teachers knew what they were doing. And him go on at some length about how important it is for the police to be on board. So if the police aren't aboard on BVSD, and the board isn't on board, and the parents aren't on board, I don't, I don't see that that's a fear. And I also feel like that could definitely be written into any sort of contract if we felt strongly about that, and I think we do. And your other comment about the, you know, you're not sure people would vote for an MLO if they, if we didn't have the language that we had in our anti-discrimination policy. Well, I can tell you, from having been on the board for seven years and having seen many MLOs pass and bonds pass, that they are not looking at the language in our anti-discrimination policy when they vote to pass a mill levy override. And I know that because a lot of these changes that we put in place in that policy have happened after those mill levy overrides were passed. So, and I know that because I'm the one who pushed hard for physical characteristics to be included in that. Because there were kids who wrote to us and said that they had been discriminated against by teachers and coaches because they had been overweight. And they were, you know, absolutely heartrending emails. And, and so that's why we did that. And I just, and I don't, Sam, to your point that, why would we let that evolve? Why don't they just put it in the way we have it? It's like, we don't have to let it evolve. We can say, "We want that in." And if it becomes a contract issue, any one of these things that we've mentioned that we have a problem with, we can just say, "No, this is a deal breaker. We want this in, if you're not willing to do it, then this is over." We still have that opportunity now. So, and Richard, I would just say, you mentioned sexual orientation in the policy, and it is listed in the policy as, he said both. And sexual orientation is listed as part of it. And, and a lot of people, whether right or wrong, believe that sexual orientation covers all the things that we might think need to be called out. So I don't think that's necessarily saying that they don't care about transgendered people or any form of sexual orientation, they're just being efficient by using that term. It doesn't mean we might not want to call that, may not want to insist on it, but I don't think there's any malice in the way that that policy's written right now. And so again, I just feel like, you know, our concerns, I have some concerns. But I feel like we can go a step further with this and see if we can get somewhere. And if we can't, we can't. And we call it quits then. I just don't think now's the time when so many people want it. And it, I'm not sure of how many other schools have exactly this model that are easily accessible to people in Boulder Valley School District. So I do think that if we don't approve this, we are limiting the choice of many of the people who stood up here tonight and said they want this option. So I just feel like we should be really thoughtful about this and go step by step and not just out and out deny at this point. It's not that I might not deny at some point if I felt like really they were intractable on some of the things that we're all concerned about. But they don't feel intractable to me right now. And so I don't understand why we wouldn't give them the benefit of the doubt.
Richard, then Kitty?
The sexual orientation, if you just leave it like that, it really doesn't cover gender, identity, or expression at all whatsoever. That's why it's there. And I really believe that that should be in the anti-discrimination policy. And if that's fine, then, you know, that's, that's great. I'd like to see that added to that. I'm not saying one way or the other how I'm voting for this particular charter school, but I am concerned that that gender identity expression needs to be included in the anti-discrimination policy.
Couple things, on some things, I agree with Shelley. I don't have any reason to think that they would discriminate in any way in terms of who they accept in their school, whether, you know, the kids are LGBTQ or their parents are, or if they're people of color. I, I just don't think they're going to. But it does trouble me that they're not interested in adding more. Why not? What's the downside of doing that? And I haven't seen that they're willing to put in gender, identity, expression, marital status, age, genetic information, and physical characteristics. I mean, how hard would it be to work with us and say, "Okay, yeah, we'll take your policy"? The policy they have given us does not, but it, but it hasn't yet. And that's the problem. The, I disagree with Shel, oh, I also agree. I don't have any concerns that they're going to espouse a religion. I don't have any concerns that they're going to have guns in our schools. I do want to say one thing is, I was very distressed at the tenor of some of this social media stuff that went on. One of the Facebook groups I am in, and I saw some of it, and what I saw wasn't that bad, but from my understanding from other groups, that there were some really hateful things said. And I think that's completely inappropriate. I think there are valid reasons for people to be concerned about this school without being hateful about it. But where I'm going to disagree with you, Shelley, is I don't think they've bargained in good faith with us. They have not answered our questions. As much as they say they have, Kathy had a list of questions that did not get answered. That troubles me. Twice?
I saw an email that was sent to you twice. Don't, this is inappropriate.
Also, yeah, the idea of, "Oh, we can just call and get answers." That's not the same thing as having it in the written application. Because they can tell us anything they want to tell us, but, and I don't know that they're not being truthful, why not put it in the written application? So we have it on paper and we can see what it is. What would be the problem with doing that? And that's why I think they've not been working with us in good faith.
So can I respond to that?
Shelley?
Yeah. So Kitty, what would be the problem with getting down to brass tacks here with them now? And saying, "Here's what we want, are you willing to do it, yes or no? And no, we're not interested in doing business with you." What is the problem with really getting clear about that right now? Because frankly, this process has not been that clear. It's a lot of emails going back and forth, a lot of questions being added, and then expecting people to respond on short notice, expecting us to digest reams of information in the last week. I mean, we had questions, we have, we still have questions about the process. So like, what, what is the problem with going one more step and saying, "We're going to talk to you one more time about these things that matter to us and see what you say"?
Well, to me, just based on past experience, I don't have any expectation that it would be any different.
So then it would be over and we would say, "Yep, we gave it another shot"?
Tina?
This was filed in August. They knew from then that we had concerns about their policies. It is now the middle of January. I don't, I've not seen anything that makes me believe that all of a sudden they're going to change the way they've responded to this and all of a sudden adopt the kinds of things that we asked them to do. I have concerns about the policy around the School Accountability Committee because we have significant concerns around governance. And their proposal for the School Accountability Committee, to me, doesn't meet the letter of the law. And a school accountability committee is really important. We just talked about our DAC and how thankful we were that 98% of the schools gave us feedback, and that's really important to us. And they don't have a policy that complies with state law. I'm concerned about their test scores. They told us they have the highest SAT scores in the state. Well, that's not true, they don't even have enough participation. They have low participation rates on their state tests. And we're really trying to make sure that that's not the case in Boulder. Our students are now taking the tests, they understand how important it is. There are real concerns. And the idea that I could just call them? There's a reason, I agree with Kitty, that we need to all be operating from this best we can, a common set of facts and a common set of answers. And my questions weren't answered, and they were just basic questions like, "How does bringing this school in help us meet our strategic plan of closing the achievement gap and serving underserved populations"? Donna, I understand that's a challenge, but they haven't done it in Golden, and they haven't done it in Douglas County. And I don't see any plan for them to be able to do it in Boulder. All I'm saying is that I understand that. But they've had, they've had years to prove that they can do it in other school districts, and they haven't done it.
Well, we just spent time talking about how we haven't done it either. So I mean-
Exactly right, Shelley. So why would we bring in a school that has a demonstrated inability to do that?
Well, I think that every single school out there is trying to do that. And it's just, it's a difficult thing to do. And I don't understand, I guess I missed the last round of questions that hadn't been answered because I've been seeing them answer questions. So I'm not, I don't want to get into, you know, I just feel like they've shown enough willingness to work with us that it's worth another try. And if, obviously, if the majority of the board doesn't feel that way, they don't feel that way. I'm not saying that I love everything about this school. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I think that there's a lot of people that want this school. And it's worth us going one more step to see if we can make it work. And if we can't, we can't.
Kitty?
Yeah, what I think I'm hearing from parents, and from a significant number of parents, is that they want a classical education for their children. And that is something I would love for, I mean, if we do not approve this school, I would be very interested in- would be very interested in seeing how we could meet that need. It does not have to be through ascent.
No.
That's something that we could do. We would not be worried about an enmeshed, a school that's enmeshed with a management company, which is a big concern for me. And we could do it with what we already have. And, I mean, I would hope that the superintendent would be interested in pursuing that because I do care what our community wants. I do care what our parents want. I am not interested in hearing from what parents in another community want us to do. We got a lot of that. That means nothing to me. Now, their experiences, their positive experiences, we're good to hear because, and, and I believe that they were positive. But I do want to listen to our parents. And I do want to find a way that we can provide the education that all of our parents want for their kids. So if I vote against this, it would not be against a classical education. It would be this organization.
And I think we have heard from parents in our district and those that homeschool, and I think they want it. And to say that we'll eventually offer it, when? You, that doesn't happen overnight. We're not going to get a building, a school, and teachers trained to support this model.
Other questions? What, what do, what do board members need now to be able to, to vote if we want to vote? Is there any information that everyone is lacking? Richard?
So, so if, because there's a motion on the floor and asks to deny. So if we vote to deny, and it's denied, then what would be the next step for ascent?
So they would, that's up to them, and they have the option of appealing to the state board? Or, or that's the end of it? That's the-
Well, then I would like to call the question.
Wait, 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 I have a question first.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we were to approve with conditions and, and go further into the contract negotiation phase, and we reached a point where we didn't think we could ever get to agreement with them, what would be the process at that point?
So again, they would appeal to the state board, and we will have spent significant staff time trying to negotiate, but that would be the difference, from my understanding. Do I have that right?
Is there any, I guess what I mean, is there any timing associated with that? Is it like open-ended or?
So they can appeal the conditions, I believe, immediately per statute. Or, or the denial, is that right?
Is your question around the contract negotiation period?
Yeah.
Because the MOU would cut that off. The expectation is there's, um, that's, the board would be voting on a contract February 26th.
Okay. So it's, it's right before us in a couple of weeks. We would just have a few weeks to get this settled.
Month.
Right? Okay. So does anybody really think that we couldn't go a couple more weeks and try and get some sort of agreement here and then be very firmly convinced that we could not on February 26th? And vote then with full knowledge that this is not going to work out?
Rob, do you want to weigh in?
So on the eighth, I, I made in, in a, in a presentation pretty clear what my recommendation was, a conditional approval based on seven conditions. The question that I think the board has to consider is why weren't those accepted at that point? These weren't negotiating points. These were conditions that I felt that if they were met, would have meet the net, met the concerns of the community that this school would serve and the, and the concerns of the board that have been here since August. They chose to respond to us on the 14th with a comment basically saying, we appreciate your recommendation with conditions, and we want a clean approval. And, which, 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 as I interpret, is that we aren't okay with these seven things. So at this point, certainly, you know, the board has a decision to make. My recommendation is to deny at this point. I feel as, as if they were going to accept all of these conditions as we laid out, that they would have done that in writing or in our meeting, um, last week, and they didn't do that.
Is there, yes.
There is one more thing I want to say because we got the letter from Philip Kilgore, who is the director of the Barney Charter School Initiative. And I'm quoting from his letter, "It is important that the governing bodies and leadership of these schools, holding a public trust, remain accountable to and transparent with the authorizer and the citizens of Colorado." And that comes from the organization that works with ACA. They are clearly not doing that.
Elaborate on that a little bit. Not, they're not doing one?
Not transparent, not accountable.
Okay. So, um, did you call the question, Richard?
I did.
Okay, so he called the question.
You actually have to vote on whether or not to call.
Okay. Yep, so, do we vote now, Melissa?
On the calling the question. For amendments.
Oh, do we, do we do that before we vote on calling the question? He called the question.
Well, we have to vote on whether or not to, to vote.
Right.
Is the way it works.
Which do we do first?
Without, well, you had already indicated that you were going to make a motion to amend.
Right.
So I would think you would make that motion.
But he called the question.
Oh, hold on. Point of order. Where was the motion to amend made? When was that motion made?
Well, we were saying that we are going, we did, we don't have a motion to amend yet, but there are a couple-
Right, we don't. We have a motion on the floor to deny the application.
Correct.
And I'm calling the question on the motion.
Okay.
And my question is, we already know there's a statement in this that's inaccurate, so how would I make a motion to make sure that it's accurate and then my one minor addition with the motion to call on the floor?
So the motion to close debate requires a two-thirds vote.
And Richard, I, I just want to make sure that our resolution is accurate. And so if we don't get to amend it, then I'm concerned about that.
It requires a second.
Has anybody seconded the call?
Call to, call to vote?
Yeah.
I agree with Kathy, we should fix the-
Or fix the resolution. I think so too.
Technical thing, we should correct it.
Okay. So your calling did not get seconded.
That's cool, so let's-
So let's, great.
So now can I make a motion to amend?
I think that's a great idea.
So Tina, you kept track, but the motion to amend that I, the two things I would want to amend are, um, five C that would state that it is widely known, and I think we just strike Douglas, both Douglas County School District and just say, Jefferson County School District decided to release ACA's affiliated school. I think that would fix that.
Okay.
I think if we wanted to make it accurate, we could say that, that Douglas County School of, um, has asked to be released, but that has not yet been decided. I don't know if we want to put that in or not.
Board members, should we just?
I think if we're not 100% sure on that process in Douglas, that we should leave it out.
Yeah, okay. So, so the amendment here is going to be to strike both Douglas County School District and from the second sentence of five C.
Five C, on what page?
And that is on page seven.
Seven. And then my other amendment was in the one, two, three, four, five. Six, the whereas clause, to just insert the word some written responses.
All right, and then I, so I have some questions about, uh, so, okay, so then I have an amendment on page four, um, four, which is B, Roman numeral four, about eight lines down, in particular, it seems, not is.
Was it title?
Yeah. And then on page five, um, two D failed to describe inserting the two on the second sentence of D.
Yes.
On two D, I'm sorry, two E, where it speaks to state standards for growth and achievement, I would probably say elementary school, which is the only data I have seen. I am wondering if anyone has looked at other data. I chose elementary school when I was personally looking at, um, the CDE data because it seemed like the best sample because the children had been there three years through the curriculum, but I don't. Does anyone have a, Rob, did you have input on that paragraph or? Okay. So, um, so I'd like to say meet sta, state standards at the elementary level. And if it, it's, you know, I don't have time to do this data research right now.
Oh, really? Why not?
Um, does it matter for two G that the compensation for faculty is well below market? Because they presumably have a different hiring mechanism as a charter school anyway, and that's our standard, but is that important to anybody?
It is to me, in part because of the amount of money that they give to ACA and the comments that we had about franchising and why that's important. So I would like to leave that in there.
Okay. Going to three B, I feel like some of these policies were covered in different formats. Any board members have opinions on this?
I think they do.
You, you do, okay. So I mean, I would pers, I would probably strike out all of B, um, three B.
Wait, what formats are you talking about?
In that they have a board member handbook that was in the appendix of the appendix section of the application.
From my way of thinking, that's not the same thing as a, as a written policy. And so I would want to leave that in, in, because they did not include it in a written policy. They can change the handbook whenever they want.
Um, any thought, Melissa, do you have any input on that?
Well, I mean, what both of you have said, I think are valid points. That they have provided information about their board and their practices of their board and, I think, a handbook format.
Right. Is that, is that adequate?
Well, that's up to you if it's adequate in terms of-
Melissa just said that what Kitty said was accurate, which is they can change it. And if it's in policy, they have to go through a procedure. So I tend to agree with Kitty on this.
Other board members?
Anti-discrimination was definitely a policy.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about that. We're just talking about the board policies in the, in this one. How do you feel about that, Donna?
There's a lot of things I don't feel good about, but-
Okay.
I've already expressed them.
Shelley or Sam, did you want to give an opinion on that?
I'm, I'm clear about manuals versus policies. I mean, the manuals I've seen include policies sometimes, so I, it's not clear to me what's written in there, if it's a policy or just a statement, so.
I mean, I appreciate that it's a different governance structure. I mean, we, we obviously just do policies, and that's kind of it. So-
I mean, the other point I'd make from the staff review of all this was the level of detail in the board policies around compliance with the open meetings law is not the same as the level of detail in the handbook, which had general statements around, we'll follow the open meetings law.
Okay. All right. Board members, what do you think?
I think we follow the staff recommendation on this, and I haven't changed my mind that they've known that we have these concerns about policies and it hasn't been corrected.
What about the I policies and that section below it in D? Melissa, is this the same idea that these are mentioned in passing but not actual policies? Is that the same topic or theme?
Right. Most of these, we didn't have replacement policies provided. And there's a statement about the first one at the last work session.
Okay.
Um, you've got some information about what they intend to do around the curriculum, but in terms of the policy work.
Right, but the thought, the thinking is that the policies are provided during contract negotiation, not during the point of application. Is that the thought right now or?
Well, that's the, what they've asserted throughout the process.
Okay. Board members?
But for example, Tina, like I said earlier, the graduation requirement one is, is really concerning to me, and they didn't give us any ki, any kind of replacement policy or language or intent. They just want to waive it. And it, I don't think it is appropriate at this point when, when policy compliance and replacement policy language is something that for several months now, they've been aware of, and they haven't given us enough information to be able to analyze that. So all it says, I, I have it in my bag, but I won't waste everybody's time on the graduation requirements. It, it, it just wants to waive it without any explanation.
Okay. All right. So I'm not going to pro, propose an amendment there. Um, okay, any other, Sam? Any other thoughts or remarks? Rob and Melissa, anything else we should be paying attention to that we might be at 10:45, not as sharp as?
I think if you've got the motion, that somebody needs to make the motion. Laura can read back the proposed changes, and then there would need to be a second.
Okay.
For the amendment.
Okay, do you want me to do that, Laura?
The proposed changes?
Yeah, or did you write them down?
I got most of them. I missed the first one that you said.
Okay, that was to change on the first page on the sixth whereas, insertion of the word some.
What do you mean choose? I have that one.
My apologies.
So you had, uh, no, I got five C.
Um, oh, sorry.
You had had something before.
B, do you have B four?
B four. B four, that's the one I was looking for.
And that's changing is to it in the third to last line or the last sentence, however you want to describe that.
Um, before, the last sentence?
Mm-hmm. In particular, it seems unlikely.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Do you want me to read them back now?
Sure.
Okay. On the sixth whereas, I've inserted the word some, so it will say ACA F provided some written responses as well as. Then on four, B four, um, the last sentence, in particular, comma, it seems unlikely the. Then on two D, the first sentence, um, after the parentheses, and failed to describe how it will. Then two E, the, um, sentence, um, will begin, or the middle of the sentence says, meet state standards for growth and achievement at the elementary level, whereas. And then the, let's see, is this five C? It is widely known that Jefferson County School District decided to release ACA's affiliated school to CSI.
Schools to school.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura.
Did I capture everything?
Yes. So now can we vote, vote to amend?
We need a second. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendments? We are not voting on the application. We're voting on the amendments. All right, any discussion? Okay. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Sure. Benford?
Yes.
Buqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, so, next step, we now have an amended motion on the table. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We couldn't have talked about it.
That's a good point. Boy, it's getting late. Boy, it's getting late. Okay. So, shall we call roll on the motion? You guys want to vote? Is everyone ready to vote? Any last words? All right, Laura, why don't you, oh, Kitty?
Just want to confirm that a yes vote is the vote to deny.
Yes.
The motion on the table is to approve Resolution 1907, the denial of ascent classical academy flatirons charter application with the amendments. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I go back to the original motion, first and second, correct? Okay. I'm calling the roll. Benford?
I'm voting no because I think we could work this out in the next few weeks.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so that was a tough board meeting. And we're really, we know it's emotional, it's a difficult decision. And I think we still have a lot of work to do to help address the parent concern that we heard this evening. So I'm, just hold on. Mm-hmm. Okay, so our next item is 9.2 School Turnaround Plan for Alicia Sanchez International School. Rob? Oh, it's Kathy.
I was going to move to adopt.
Board members, we shared information on this with you in news and notes. Presented it before, so this is this fraction.
Okay, any questions or comments around the turnaround plan for Alicia Sanchez Elementary School? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to approve.
I'm going to vote to adopt it, but I'm still concerned with the language.
Okay. I need a motion, I forgot that.
I did.
Oh, I did?
And Kitty seconded it.
Oh, my goodness, okay. Laura, would you call the roll?
Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is 10 Policy Action Consent Grouping. On 10.1 Board Policy Adoption JB Equal Educational Opportunities. 10.2 Board Policy Adoption JF ABD Homeless Students. 10.3 Board Policy Adoption JF ABE Students in Foster Care. 10.4 Board Policy Adoption JFE JFF Pregnant Married Students. 10.5 Board Policy Adoption JICI Weapons in School. Do I have a motion to approve those policies?
Still moved.
Seconded by? I'll second it. Is any discussion or anyone want to pull one of those policies for discussion? Okay, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, for number 12 Policy Studies, 12.1 Study of Policies, I'd like to move that we postpone the 12.1 Study of Policies to the next board meeting. Yeah. Uh-huh.
Yeah, to amend the agenda, you do.
Anyone want to second that?
I do.
Okay. Laura, would you call the roll? Postpone to the next regular board meeting.
The motion is to postpone. Who did the first, I'm sorry? The whole board?
I moved it. I moved it and everyone seconded. No, Kathy seconded.
Okay. Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then lastly, study items. Did anyone have anything they want to add for agenda setting? Probably not right now.
Well, I just, I forgot to-
Yeah, I would imagine.
Can I just ask one thing that I forgot to ask during? And I think Rob's already doing this, but that is that we, unless the government shutdown goes away tomorrow, that we work to be able to help our families with a much easier process to get lunch assistance or other kinds of assistance so they don't have to go through some elaborate procedure. And maybe we put that on the front of our webpage, I don't know. But get the word out that we're willing to work with our families that may be struggling in these kind of challenging times.
That's an idea that we've discussed with staff and it's something we'll look into. And I'll make sure I circle back with the board, let you know where we're at.
All right, thank you so much, and I'd like to adjourn this meeting.